Again, for your willingness to come together, thank you for your flexibility in location. On that note, we'll share with you that we are continuing to work on the issue in council chambers. We learned yesterday that the test that they had done has not yet passed, so they're still doing some work, so we're going to do all virtual Tuesday night. We'll make that announcement on Monday through the clerk's office, through our social media, but generally out of an abundance of caution, not that we think there's an actual health concern or issue, but out of an abundance of caution, we're going to let them finish their work and then return on the 26th for the work session and the 27th for a council meeting. So again, all virtual on teams on Tuesday night until 13th. We had already made any necessary changes so that there was no one that needed or wanted to be there in person per se, so we can handle that meeting remotely. Any questions? Okay. We tell you this morning that this room before your arrival was completely sanitized, everything, everywhere you're sitting, everything that you might be touching has been wiped down and cleaned. Anyone that is at the room has had their temperature taken, and other than when the masks might be down for eating or drinking, we're going to ask everyone to keep a face covering on, out of respect to the others in the room. You will see at your tables, there is at least one, if not two, blue stripes. If you will just keep your chair inside that designated area, you're welcome to use the whole table, but in that area, that keeps you six feet from anyone else in the room. And it's all been doubly, triple measured to make sure that that's the case. Also, want to thanks the folks real quick, as you can imagine, this doesn't happen. I want to introduce you, many of you have not had a chance to meet Kristi. So Kristi Fattalori came to us from the city Raleigh back in 1984 as our CFCC director here at the facility, so she has also done a lot to make this happen this morning. Go ahead and say your name.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming in. It's great to have people back in the building again, so it's good that you have it together here. Let us know what you think, if you need anything. I have given Brandon the rundown on where everything is in the building, so if you need anything, you can call us now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't recall, restrooms are out the door, we'll have to go to the end of the hall. We also have the kitchen in there, there is a coffee machine, there are some snacks in there. Again, we're not providing a meal per se, but certainly enough to get you through until we wrap up at 1:00. I think that is the highlights that I have. Will?
If I can just say, if everyone can please speak profoundly, if you live, Facebook Live, if you can speak clearly and loudly, I'll help out a lot.
Where is the mic? Right in the middle? Right in the middle. Okay. Cool. There you go then.
On this talker, it's also very important to remember because of that, not to interrupt each other, so please wait until the other person has finished speaking, you're recognized, so that you can go out clearly.
Brad will be facilitating the first part, and I'll be facilitating the second.
Yeah, you'll have the order and then I'll take over.
Good morning, I call this October 10, 2020, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to Order. Thank you to those listening via audio stream. This meeting is being facilitated in person at Cedarport Community Center following Social Distancing Guidelines and Capacity directives. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council, this meeting is not open to the public. Audio of this meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will now conduct a roll call of council members. Mayor Colley, present. Mayor Pope-Tom Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Bender.
Present.
Councilmember Garamella.
Present.
Councilmember Rau.
Present.
Councilmember Robati.
Present.
Councilmember Straggings-Johnson.
Present.
All councils present. Thank you. Prior to further action, I'll ask if there is a motion in second to invoke Rule 19.
Who'll make that motion? Second.
Town Clerk Smith will now facilitate a roll call vote. Councilmember Straggings-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rau.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Bender.
Aye.
Mayor Pope-Tom Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving to Rule 19, Patina. We are now at item four, there is one discussion item on today's agenda, draft land use plan work session, Part Three, continue. Decrement extension area slash airport noise overlay key policies and code revision discussion and general policy area discussion. Brad West, senior planner, will facilitate the discussion. Prior to turning the decision, discussion over to Brad, I'd like to thank, I'd like to ask town council to spend a few minutes talking about how we wish to proceed today in our discussion, and talking with each other about key issues. Frank Gray, town attorney, has also requested a brief closed session to discuss matters covered. Under attorney time privilege, we will take brief periodic breaks during the meeting or as requested. It will also be beneficial to reserve about 15 minutes near the end of the meeting, which is scheduled to end at 1:00, to discuss next steps. So this time, I'd like to also say, I'm hoping that today we can replicate what we did at our most recent retreat, which was having really good discussions, followed by straw poll votes about how we're going to move forward with things, and have genuine curiosity about each other's positions, and how we feel about things, and how we're making our decisions, and that will help all of us in how we can move together as a council. So this time, I'd like to open it up to your thoughts and comments, and we have a whiteboard over there described, so if there's any items that you think will be important for us to discuss after we vote, that's items, now is the time to mention them, and we'll revisit that list before we actually delve into that list later. So I'll recognize councilmember Straggings-Johnson at this time.
I have two items. The first is related to zoning, the neighborhood activity center and the distance activity center, I'd like us to revisit definitions so that we can ensure that there's more than one use when that zoning is applied. It seems like we're getting single-use products, so if the council could entertain a short discussion about how they want to approach that in order to make sure that we have multiple uses in those zoning districts. The other is, I've noticed over time, as well as some of the other council members, that the meeting minutes are getting very verbatim. At one point, we had said that that was not necessary, maybe a couple of years ago, and now I'm seeing these very exquisite minutes that are carefully detailed, but I'm not sure this is the level of detail that we need for all our meeting minutes. So I don't know, if we want to discuss that approach, is that something that is acceptable to everybody at this time, or if we want to go back to less verbatim minutes, since we do have redundancy in recordings?
Okay, given that we have four hours to do land use plan, that might be something that we do towards the end of that at this time, but we'll discuss as a group how we want to address the list when we get there.
That's it, thank you.
Mayor present.
No, I'm good person.
Councilmember Garamella.
I want to talk about the housing stock and how the, you know, included ability place it on the top, so, because I know some people have opinions, that would be a good topic to discuss as to how to address that.
Okay. Councilmember Rau.
The first thing I think that we can do, you know, for the public, as we continue these discussions, I think that there's a lot of confusion out there, a lot of land use planning and zoning. And I noticed this in emails, a lot of the stuff I read on social media and stuff, so I think it's really important for us to understand and articulate to the public that land use is probably the strategic direction for future generations of Morrisville residents, tribal residents, 20, 30 years out. We have a plan, and it doesn't mandatory, it doesn't require us to own things for that plan, it's just basically, you know, a plan that we have, we have to stick to. So, and I guess that might be all of us kind of learning from the staff about this, but that's feedback I want to give you all, where I see a lot of confusion out there. Don't accept land use plan because you don't want to have a long family. I understand the concerns of that, and I definitely, that's my second point, is I do want to work on what are other options of reducing density where we can, but at the same time, preserving density so that we have housing stock for many people that are coming in. Because I think if we just stop and say, we don't want to have any more children, which I don't think anyone's saying, I know no one's saying that, then, you know, where are they going to live if you can't have single family? So that's, you know, the second point that I would make. So some of the other areas, we're going to talk about the airport, the equipment, I'm not going to make comments about that, but those are definitely two areas that I'm the most concerned about, I mean, the range of things. But, you know, I look forward to a good session, but I think those are my two kind of highlights on. I do think that we need to, the final thing I'll say is that, I truly believe that we've got to slowly get to the finish line where we adopt the plan. So I think we've got to get thoughtful votes going and get to a place where we can go and play, because I don't think a town can move forward if you don't have a land use plan, so we have to adopt the plan.
So Councilman Rau, you said two things, I caught confusion with the land and zoning with the public, what was the second?
The second one was, as we look at, I think, also, when you look at housing stock, what are the different levels that we can look at, long family, median density, because there are concerns about?
And I think what the next one, I think he's talking about is discussion about adaptation of the land use plan too, because it's, the confusion is one part of it, and confusion is to adopt or not to adopt or keep it hanging, so that's.
Adoption time on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What I also heard in some way was density discussion, sort of as the housing stock within, a couple of things I'd like to, if we have time, to address, the reaffirming the goal of process in two and a half years. The staff's been good, reminding us, but it'd be good to hear from our fellow council members what we hope to achieve by doing this, what's our purpose. Need to go back and review the map? Review the map and reaffirm the areas we've already touched on, like town center and TODs. Might be good to have a reading discussion about the new district, being proposed, the median density, single-family detached only, teach her that we're all okay with that, and how that might move forward, and the other items were already mentioned by other council members. Yeah, we're going to use your blue thing if you want to. I started, Councilmember Robati, and then Councilmember Bender, please.
Further to Councilmember Rau's point, I would like to get, I'd like to understand from my fellow council members what they see as the goal of what we want to provide, what we want to end up with, you know, where are we all on, do we need more apartments and town councils? Where are we all on types of detail that we want to add? Where are we all on, what, on priorities for town center? I'd just like to have some kind of clear understanding of that from everybody, so that I know where they're coming from.
Councilmember Bender?
Two things, I guess, we discussed within the confines of the land use plan, how we can, and we need to keep it in our mind when we're talking about the different categories for the areas, but keep the amount of trees and green space in the forefront of our minds of how the decisions we're making are going to impact those trees. Given the amount of comments that we had with regards to that, it's pretty important to the resident. I think we need to, let me get my thoughts in order, figure, I mean, figure out a way to highlight the importance of trees and green space within our land use plan, highlight it more than it currently is. And then two, I think we just need to, as we're reviewing the areas, keep in mind the impact that it has on school.
The planning director to have that session ready for the next meeting. Okay, Councilmember Garamella, followed by Mayor Potemps.
Yeah, one of the discussions was like, is go back and look into the maps, I think that would be a good one, because for being remote, it was very hard for discussion, I think this is a good place to talk about.
Okay, will you capture that one? Mayor Potemps-Johnson?
So before, I have two items too, before I say that, talk about that, I really just want to say thank you to everybody that's here. As I was driving here this morning, it occurred to me, this is the first time the seven of us have been together in a meeting in person since February. So I really want to thank all of you for being here, and I know this was not an easy decision to meet in person, so I really, really appreciate that. I think it, personally, it means a lot to be able to see each one of you, so even though with a mask, it's hard to, it's hard, it's hard to understand people's facial expressions with a mask on, but I just really want to say that it's been a long time, so I appreciate that. I agree with Satish, the map, I'd like to make sure we revisit that. I also want to make sure we revisit Attachment 13. Attachment 13 is a list of revisions that we requested during discussion, and I'm not sure that we have consent on everything on this list. I think this is a great list of what each one of us brought up, but not so sure there was really consensus, so I want to make sure we revisit that. And then I agree with just about everything everyone said, those are all really important items that we should go back and talk about. Thank you.
I echo 13, and I know there's at least one thing on there that I want to revisit when we get there. Okay, and like I said, after we go through this discussion that Brad will facilitate, we'll be able to revisit this, and also the idea of breaks, I was thinking we might have two breaks, number one, after an hour and a half, two hours, another breaking point, if that's okay with everybody, if anyone has any urgent need, just let us know, and we'll make it, and we'll decide, probably 10-minute breaks at that point, if you find that one, we'll be able to. Okay, so if there's nothing else right now, we'll go ahead, I'll turn the discussion over to Brad West, and take us to the next two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we are continuing our charge board with review of the draft land use plan. We've covered three important key topic areas, we have two remaining, specifically the airport overlay discussion, and then also the recurring extension. Out of those two things, I'd like to revisit, because like many of you all agree, the map markup, I'd like to get a list of provisions that we've seen here. This is a good follow-up, some key policy. So I'll start, talk about airport overlay pretty interchangeably. Many of you know a lot of what's being proposed, TOD and recurring extension area, isn't possible without the RDU airport overlay discussion. So we're going to maybe start with the overlays, and then sort of dissect the recurring extension area specifically, so. Give you a quick background, the original airport overlay, I'm going to pull up some color, was based off of an initial 1992 airport noise contour study. So this was, I think this is a graph that's showing different levels of noise coming from the airport runways. The FAA considers anything above 65 decibels as sort of noxious, that you wouldn't want to reconsider certain reasons, ask communities to restrict certain land use as impossible, but everything below that is deemed accessible or acceptable, everything above that gets even more restricted. So you can see is, in 1992, the orange line that I'm kind of moving around my cursor, let me get this, but you can't see it. How about that? So here's 40, and I apologize, we don't have another for this, this is the only map we were given by RDU. So here's 540, or my cursor's moving, here's 540, chaplone, sort of, almost at the edge of this 65 decimal line. So this is what was studied in the early 90s, and the town later in the mid 90s adopted an airport noise overlay to restrict certain uses, like all residential, for instance, in this area, to sort of dissuade development happening closer to the airport. Now, when the 2009 land use plan was being developed, there was a call for either a light rail station, commuter rail station, at the current side of what we call the TOD in the current, and it's like, sort of drawn out as like a purple, and we were envisioning that being implemented a lot sooner than it, than it actually is being implemented. And so bus rapid transit was not in the discussion back then, that was something that was sort of new emerging technology. So since then, Washington, because of the TOD and the need for TOD in that area, we worked with the airport to shift the airport noise contours into two districts, basically airport overlay B, airport overlay A. Airport overlay A is basically everything east of 54, and that would maintain a real restrictive set of regulations for certain certain sets of uses. Everything west of 54, which is just really a small sliver of area here, would then allow for residential uses with noise attenuation requirements. So we could have multi-family, we could have schools, things like that. So that's been the land of land for quite some time, and it continues today. In 2014, 2014, RDU revisited this noise contour study, and FAA, RDU, published these latest noise decimal contour lines, and you'll notice a significant reduction in airport, I'm sorry, noise contour 65 decimal lines, and you'll see it pretty much fully removed out of Morrisville, back to I-14, here's I-40, just over. And here's NC-54, so if you remember, the orange was all the way past NC-54. Couple reasons for that, they've channeled flight paths a lot more narrowly than they used to, the noise from the airplanes has obviously gone down since, you know, the 1992 was essentially the end of the, a long time ago, planes are a lot louder, technology has since caught up with sort of noise mitigation, so they're a lot smoother and wider when they're coming in, leaving. And so as a result, the noise contours have shrunk dramatically. Again, let's see if we can, from here, so here's new contours, here's the old, and you should have this printed out in your, in your patent package, so you can see significant reduction. And because of this, the consultants and staff, this would be a great opportunity to capitalize on some major investments being made in the permanent extension area, and also capitalize on the major investments being made with this region-wide commuter rail system, potentially a bus rapid transit system. Now, we had a discussion about the TOD and the justification for that, on the east side right now, it's kind of just designated on the west, really catering to this new potential bus rapid transit system, which seems more viable than the light rail was, and sort of working with a parallel commuter rail system. So we're really excited about it. The only issue is that none of the residential can occur, that's critical for now of activity needed for a viable transit system with the current overlay as it is. And so staying within FAA guidelines, I'll pull those out. So here's where we are, we're under 65 decibels, these FAA guidelines, we are clear, everything that the yes means, go ahead and go for it. We are clear for virtually every use in that area, according to RDU, I'm sorry, according to the FAA.
The 2014 contracts.
Yeah, with the 2014 contracts.
All of this is in our patent.
Correct. And so FAA also does allow, so there's a no here for certain uses, but there's a one in parentheses, which means no, but with noise attenuation, yes. So even in the areas above 65 decibels, which is covering our current overlay, still buildings uses, but they require noise attenuation. So what the land use plan is proposing is that, let me go to the actual proposal here, and I'm going to try to, essentially what the land use plan is proposing, a result of these significantly reduced noise contours, is that we're going to recommend taking airport overlay B, which is the less restrictive one, but it's still requiring noise attenuation, and shipping it over and supplanting part of airport overlay A. We would maintain a large portion of overlay A to account for a possibility of RDU having a third runway. So RDU, as a representative on our technical advisory committee, gave a presentation, you will, not long ago, about the airport's perspective on this. They cited a number of concerns, one of the main concerns was they want to ensure that any future noise generated from a third runway would be accounted for in our plan. So that's what we've done, so we've since peeled back the area to account for any kind of noise shift, contour shift up at the third runway, for sake of clarity, the third runway's going to be sort of near here, the Bryant Creek rest park area.
What page is that?
That's page, 42 in the document, 40 in the actual, yeah, or sorry, in the printout. If you're looking online, it's 42, and it's on the printout, it's page four. And so what this would do is this would allow for multiple different uses, what the plan is proposing is limiting, and again, in response to some RDU concerns expressed in the technical advisory committees, limiting residential to higher density residential multi-chemical, so that could be condos, that could be regular apartments, that could be workers' housing, it could be senior life. So really those four things is what we're thinking about for residential in this area.
When you say this area, you mean the red?
And so everything in red is what's being considered to be amended, as the airport overlay.
We'll go away.
So not go away from the apple, so it would, it would shift airport overlay B to where that red is, so you'd still have an airport overlay, you'd still be require, or recommending that we would require noise attenuation measures for certain sensitive uses like residential. It's just you would allow these now, it wouldn't be as restrictive.
So blue is existing.
Blue is existing airport overlay B, correct. And we might clean this up later, just to make it a little more intuitive, right now it's kind of hard to understand, but essentially, that's where we're at now, and so we've worked very closely, Michelle and I have worked very closely with the property owners in this area, at least the big three mall indications there in support, you may have received some emails from them, all indications, they're generally in support of that amendment, they see the viability of a lot of different uses, other than in this kind of office flex, sort of what would be the status quo there today with that overlay. So that's where we are now, we've also worked, we've been constantly communicating with RDU, as you all know, and for full disclosure, RDU is not in agreement with this, they would rather us maintain airport overlay, just to be on the safe side, they directly receive a lot of the noise complaints generated from residents, and so they are giving everything they can to mitigate encroachment towards the airport. We feel we've been responsible for that by not recommending amending this area near the Old Apple Mall, in case there's a third runway and build one there. Amount of use of the practice residential, leaving it only to multi-family, because it's easier to noise attenuation with, and we're not sure that we completely require single-family noise attenuation due to state legislation. And also, you know, we want to be a good part of RDU, and so we're trying to work out a compromise in this area, and so that's what we've been done here with leaving this section.
And just to.
And just to clarify, this red area then is either in the 55 or the 60 decimal?
Yeah, it's below 65, so it's, I'm going to be. So it's in like, so some of it's in the 60, some of it's in the 55, correct?
So if I could speak up just briefly. I mentioned in some of the emails to you that we had been, we, staff had been invited by the RTU Task Force, who was a group of RTA, Regional Transportation Alliance members, to get and understand more information about our land use plan, but in particular, the airport overlay issue. They were. With some of the discussions that the airport was in, particularly related to some of the quarry issues and the fence issues, and ways to address the needs of the airport along with the surrounding community needs. So they were formed, they did a lot of understanding and awareness of that, provided RTU some recommendations about how they could use their, et cetera. That was provided in the RTA annual meeting, January, February of last year, right before COVID hit. Certainly, the airport has had to do a lot of pivoting itself with the impact of the virus on it. So it may not be fair to say what have they done with some of the information in that report. But they did provide, the airport provided the RT, the RTU Task Force an update on their concerns about the overlays. And in fairness, they asked the town staff to do that as well. And that meeting occurred this week. So Brad did a. Up at presenting. Not only to just how we've worked with the airport to address their needs. They've asked us sort of for a quick one pager of the information that Brad provided, which we're going to do after this. Provide them some information after that. So I just wanted to give you that update. The community is interested in your discussion. You've also heard that I wanted to give you some information in a closed session with attorney kind privilege. I would suggest this would be the right place to go into closed sessions to get that information.
Brad, how are other towns or cities dealing with this? That's not like the first time in other cities, like, so have you even looked into other cities, how they're dealing with it? Because literally Miami or New York, now you're pretty much going all through.
Yeah.
Housing and land.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, some, like you mentioned, some cities handle it very differently than RTU. So RTU, that has the luxury of having a lot of empty space around it, a lot of airports. So our consultant colleagues from Chicago, they, I don't know if you fly beautiful in Chicago, because of the airport of Midway, you literally fly right over a single family. It's almost like you could. And so obviously, there's some issues there with encroachment that are very serious. The other end of the spectrum is like Denver's airport, where it was built out in the middle of a prairie, there was nothing around it. They had the luxury of being able to plan that way ahead of time and buy up a bunch of land. Now, they're facing a similar problem where developers are trying to never start a city encroaching on that airport.
Yeah, I'm going to do it, right, like the example you said. This is private owner's lands, you know? So this is not like RTU, RTU obviously has the right. They own 2,000 acres around it, so their will, how they do it. But are they in a position to dictate the rest of the land use plan based on the way they want it, when there are several examples across the country otherwise which have been doing their, doing okay?
Yes, the short answer is no, they do not. But I think what we're trying to accomplish in the land use plan is this cooperation, partnership with RTU. We, RTU is extremely important to the town. It's a reason for a lot of the town's success. We're right by a lot of lodging, research triangle park, a lot of that is supported by RTU. They're certainly an important partner that we want to work with in every step of the way here. But we also have our own town goals that we're trying to accomplish. We also have property rights of private property owners to consider. We have housing goals, we have other land use goals in this area, TOD is a major one. So we're trying to balance RTU's concerns with our community's goals. And so we think we're doing that with the way the current proposal is. At first, you know, if we just took the Airport Overlay B and just transplanted or supplanted completely Airport Overlay A, you'd allow things like townhomes. We technically don't have to do noise attenuation. We're going beyond the call of duty with that in terms of what the FAA recommends. Again, FAA is just recommending the guidelines. We don't have to follow them. Or RTU's concerns, move towards their positions as much as we can, but also maintaining the goals set forth in this plan. So short answer, but no, they don't have any.
Not only for it next time, if they have a fourth runway and they come up with a different, but then the damage is already done. Which are, you know, basically, we don't have that much foresight. The perfect example of 1992, the whole war, kind of planes. But by the way, there's a plane that goes at 515, you don't live in. The morning, they'll be. Doors to it. But still, you know, there are, so that's okay. They're doing, but I just want to have a foresight feature that they don't say now, oh, by the way, you are all, you know, have a new way. And do you have that foresight?
Yeah, we have, I thought I attached it, but we, we rough plan of third runway. We know the rough alignment is. I wish I could, but it's basically right on the of that, so it's basically this little service road here. There's a taxiway that goes here to the main runway. So you'd really be coming across, just pretend this road essentially, it would beat over the. The former. Stitch probably would be done. So we've precaution, we all know that 65 decimal line will shift that. They might not even shift that way. The planes are continuing to get quieter and quieter. But just in response to RTU's concerns, to be a good partner, we shifted, or we shifted back what we're recommending. We're also, one expansion is we're also not recommending townhomes. Single-family homes at any time, including townhomes. There is one property owner there who'd like us to reconsider that potentially and allow for townhomes. We just feel more comfortable with multifamily because it's easier to have noise attenuation with. We are not sure we can legally ask single-family homes, like townhomes, to do noise attenuation.
When you look at that chart that you showed of the FDA recommendations of what could be built, if you look, if you compare that and then look at the noise contours, in theory, we could build any type of residential within that area.
Right.
But 2014 was a low point of traffic in the area. Or the area, so is it? Is it short sighted of this maybe to assume that that would be, that the noise level chart would remain the same as? Because I'm adding, obviously, like, Vicious dropped off a clip, but, I mean, it had been increasing, increasing every year before that. So I'm just wondering, like, if we start moving the line back of that land use A, and, I mean, I feel like they've been pretty clear that it's only going to get louder over there. Does that leave us with any kind of exposure if we build houses there anywhere? And then people can't live there or suffer ill effects from mold?
Yeah, so this was, I think, the RTU representative, and he's mentioned this in our technical advisory committee, that traffic, particularly during the recession, and then it sort of climbed back up. This was in decline, so it wasn't at full capacity.
Well, 2014 was, T was like the.
Yeah, well, the recession. Yeah, well, yeah, so the, if you look, they have like a crap or something that should. They have like a, a number of flights from RTU.
Yeah.
It just starts bouncing, when the recovery was starting to happen, that was 2012 or so. Flight started to, you know, that you. Battles especially, picking up. So you're right, not more traffic. They have not done noise contour studies since then. Even if there was a shift, these are still guideline recommendations, similar to how land use plan operates. The FAA land use guidelines are essentially a land use plan for what you do around airports.
Right, but I guess my question is, we, so we're building the white competition center. Microsoft is here now, I mean, there's. We're building new facilities, we will be, with the language of the group, we'll be building new that'd be company headquarters. And, and so we're going to have a lot more business use in more so once everything is built out. So I, so I guess my question is, it seems like the airport traffic is going to go further than down once everybody can fly there, who knows when that's it. So I wonder if it would be, when are they going to do the next noise over?
We've asked, have a, we've not been told, so. I think it's to be determined. I don't know if it would be dramatically different from what they're showing. If there is increased traffic, it could be. I know they're continuing to try to narrow the flight path purchase so that you, you did have an extension of noise. It would be very narrow for planes, and that's, they're doing that very intentionally to not have to spread out. Back in the 90s, not so much, you can see it was a lot lighter. So yeah, that is certain, certainly something to consider when you're planning for this area. So just something to keep in the back of your mind. Absolutely, but again, and these are. The FAA even says, okay, let's say you are in this over 65 area. It's up to the community to decide how they want to build residential. They don't have a right to say, no residential, please. They say, please do residential. You go to this little notation number one, where the community determines that residential or schools must be allowed in the area. Measures to achieve outdoor and indoor noise level reduction, now that these 25 decimals to 30 decimals should be incorporated in building. So that's what we would recommend, even for just this area, what you say. So we're hoping to accommodate that, to your point. If there is an increase in traffic, that we're at least, if we do happen to shift for whatever reason in 65, we're already still within FAA guidelines by requiring noise attenuation. So we're still covered.
So to Councilman Veremello's point, I think we're just trying to be good neighbors with the airport. They feel like they have influence with us because we're good partners, just like we try to influence Cary with some of their decisions. So that's how I see it. We don't have any control of what Cary does. The airport doesn't have any control, but they're trying to influence us in a positive. Brad had a term during what you were saying, which I found very interesting. Our housing goals, and I don't know if we've talked about our housing goals. So to sort of go on to the housing stock townwide, I'd like to, let me readdress that. Think about housing goals, what staff sees as our housing goals, and how we feel about that. So I just wanted to mention that, because that's not a term I've really thought of for us, but it might be something for us to talk about later. Any other thoughts?
Yeah. Sorry, I can't talk to you. So. For me, I think this is a very important decision point, if we're going to have to. Come.
Close session before we start someone?
Oh, okay.
You have a question?
Well, yeah, I guess my question was, before we go into a closed session, I'm just going to throw this out there. Why do you believe, from a staff perspective, that residential in this area would be in the best long-term interest for a lot of things you want to do? Like, do you believe that it's very important for the future of Morrisville in terms of just having more housing options for when more people are coming here, companies are coming here? I mean, that's what I really want to know, you and the staff is, how important is it to our future, you know, to have some opportunity residential here? Or would it, I mean, obviously, industrial is off the table for me, that may have to be something, but does it have to be residential, or look at the concerns of the airport, or how the options can be considered, like allowing hotels and retail, but not residential? That's sort of my thing, because I don't want to sell more so short, even though airport's a good neighbor, to give up options that could help us with our economic returns, our growth as a town, and the ability of providing workforce housing, affordable housing, things. So this is an opportunity, and if we, we do what neighbor wants, or have it, are we losing? Is that hurting us a lot?
No, that's your point. But so staff and consultants perspective, they don't want to see the entire crim and corridor or T-Hall, I think there is a demand, you know, potential need really for limited multifamily development in those areas. More so TOD, it is critical for the critical mass of activity to approach for that transit system to be viable. So multifamily in the TOD is essential for that work. On the McCrimmon Extension Parkway, there's ways that we can space it out. I think Michelle and I are looking into potential options for you all to consider for how we can do that. We see a corridor, a diverse set of uses, office, retail. We don't want to see a cluster of all multifamily along the crim and parkway. You all said, told us not to do that in the sub-area work session that we had back in 2015, or 2019. So two main reasons, so I touched on one main reason why housing's being sought after in this area, TOD. The other is, and I don't know if you remember Sarah Dasko ever talking about this, but she was a big advocate for having housing near the workplace, you know, having folks locating very closely to their workplace. Workplace, she, she reminded us of this at the RTA meeting, she happened to be on the call, that a big recruiting tool that a lot of these companies have is, hey, we have all this nice housing stock right next to where you work, and there's also some stuff to do while you're here, so it's a great place to live. How work for us? It's an attractive incentive for a lot of folks. A lot of those workers tend to be younger and tend to be moving around a lot. And so there's a tremendous demand for renters, for multifamily. And so, and even if they could afford a house, a lot of them choose not to. Which is what we're seeing in demand. Or I'm not the demand side expert, but we rely on household being in the development community to provide us with data about the free market, how that's playing into all of it. They're very much, you've received some letters from them, they're very much in tune with the fact that a lot of these tech workers, bio life science workers, you know, they prefer to be more mobile, to have smaller living arrangements than a traditional single-family. So that's what we're trying to accommodate. But we also don't want to inundate the area with multifamily. That's not something we're trying to accommodate. There's also the, you know, the notion that we don't plan for high-density residential appropriately. We always put in areas where the infrastructure is just tapped out. We're not building the infrastructure first. And really having forethought into the traffic needs and the school needs. This is one of the unique areas where we've actually done the transformation infrastructure first, and that we're going to do transit infrastructure. This is a major investment area of transportation done for both transit and bike lanes. So this is a rare opportunity to actually have the infrastructure in place first, and then do the planning of what actually is built there. So we think a lot of the capacity from the Crimmon Parkway, especially when it gets flyover, and also with additional transit, transit, commuter rail, will accommodate a lot of that new core of that area. So that's, that's kind of our thinking, the consultants' thinking, of why these two specific areas are being looked at as the area of where the higher density residential should be going. Now, another reason I should also mention is, folks don't want it in the western side of town. They're, they're single-family airports. We've heard that directly. People don't want it, smack up next to their, if they want it somewhere else. They don't, a lot of them specify where else, but we think this would be an appropriate area to shift to. To accommodate somewhere. Helped that answer your question.
Really does, thank you very much.
So at this time, I'm going to end the motion, go to closed session, and we'll continue the discussion back to that. So at this time, I identify the motion going to closed session and we'll continue the discussion after that.
Proceeding through, I'm going to count at you, 1.43, 3.18, 3.18, 1.83. I move to be going to closed session before purposes of discussing the training class.
I'll second.
Eric Smith will do a roll follow up on the motion going to closed session, please.
Councilmember Strick, Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Relai.
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph.
Aye.
Councilmember Baramella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson, you know.
Okay, it's 9:55, you're now in closed session. Staff will turn off the audio feed and open session, have a nice discussion, and we'll continue. I'll pass it back to Brad West. Question, want to take? I don't, we're taking a break, I'm looking for nods and hints. Okay. Want to take a quick break, we can be in at 10:35, and then we'll continue this. It is 10:35, recurring back into session. I've now turned it back over to Brad West to help facilitate the finishing of our discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, so what House Will Bean is looking for in terms of input is, the airport owners are like, they just want to know if you all are generally comfortable with what's been proposed in the plan, the precautions that are being taken, to take into account or use considerations and points. Just to recap, the restrict, not amending the area, airport overlay area in your potential future third runway. So in the event that controversy changes or requiring noise attenuation for the both multifamily uses in this area, that would be, and then third, to restrict it only, all residential to only multifamily, not allowing for any single family zones, which includes town. So those are the big three, and then also the actual delineation of this area. So leaving this area out of the.
So the yellow area you can stay is restricted A, everything else is coming in, and the blue.
Correct, yeah, so the blue would turn, so if this red is, then they would all turn blue. So maybe better, I'll straighten this.
So we've had some good discussion about this. Before we go to the straw poll, I'd also like to say that I think the council will also be amenable to directing staff to write a letter of invitation to the airport authority and their officials, asking them to come discuss with us in less of a presentation, more of a discussion about what their concerns are, so that we can make sure that we are being sensitive to their needs. Because there's lots of interests, there's property owners, there's development community, there's them, there's our residents. So we want to make sure that we're hearing from everyone. We are very fortunate that one of their officials was on our people advising committee throughout the process. So we valued that input, we adjusted our plan accordingly. We're still hearing that they still have concerns. So we want to hear those concerns in an active manner. We want to be good partners because we know that the airport is very important to the entire region, not just Mooresville. So we appreciate their continued discussion and partnership and we're looking to actively maintain that and build upon that. Also, I think there's an interest in the council to learn a little bit more about obligation easements and how that might mitigate the concerns about possible civil litigation in the future against us and against the airport. That might be a way to make things a little bit smoother and make sure that there's no litigation against either of the parties and protect our citizens and taxpayers as well. So that being said, Brad summarized it very well, what direction they're looking for from us. So I guess if we can take a straw poll to affirm that, now would be the time to talk about that. Does anyone have any concerns that they'd like to share before we start? Seeing none, I'm just going to go clockwise, starting with Councilmember Robi. That sound, an I or an A?
Aye.
Councilmember Strick, Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Ralph.
Aye.
Mayor Colley, aye. Mayor Proton Johnson.
Okay, well, it's not a real vote. Yes, I am generally in support.
Okay. Councilmember Fender.
Yes.
Councilmember Baramella. And so you have that direction. Let me ask you, would you rather kind of more go with head nods or how do you want to do the rest of these straw polls?
This is what we should do for all.
That one coming great, so to Mayor Proton's point, it's not a formal vote, it's more of an affirmation and consensus. Councilmember Fender.
Well, we're going to talk about that further because I agree in constant with some caveat. So are we going to be talking further?
Sure, yeah, so we're, so this is just the general overlay discussion, then we're going to focus on the permanent extension. That's what you're asking?
Yes, completely.
As just noted on Tuesday, we have something coming before us, which is very pertinent to the yellow area that we're talking about. So that's going to be a good time to have some open discussion about what we're actually looking to do in that area. Okay. Also, the airport overlay discussion, we'll pass it back to you, sir.
So we're going to jump to the McCrimmon extension area. So again, this is part of the sub-area discussion, here's just the delineation of an extension area. This will of course fall within that airport noise overlay.
What page on the PDF?
Oh, I'm sorry, that is page 65, the document, and it looks like 67 on the PDF from the internet. So we talked about the TOD, lots of good input from you all on that. So we move to McCrimmon extension area. So what House Will Bean has done is they just sort of snapshot the existing condition area of the area. This is actually the weight competition center in Eastmore. They did a diagrammatic view of this, the general lane use breakdowns, again, purely conceptual. I think what they're trying to demonstrate is a mix, a horizontal mix of uses. They don't envision, or they don't, they recommend not having a corridor full of one specific type of use. They think breaking it up as much as possible is the way to go. And that, that's reflective of the, of the, you all gave us at the sub-area work session. This is just a conceptual build out of the area of what they think the market could support. Not necessarily what actually is to be built, but just what they think can be supported landwise, with certain site constraints considered. They just wanted to kind of overlay a basic street grid pattern as well connected to streets, just to show you how that could work, but again, purely conceptual. Number of units, square footage, everything's conceptual. So this is the rendering of all of that, considering that's just a simple massing model. There was a comment of showing the waste center here, waste, anyway, so I think we've been getting suggestions and we'll, I've asked them to come back with an amended version of this and show us that. And this is basically just a, just for the purposes of showing scale, massing, mixing of uses, how the buildings are up to the road or the sidewalk for increased walkability. It's envisioned that a lot, there'd be a functional accessway from the sidewalk to also promote walkability. They really, the vision for this corridors to have office courts and folks standing in their hills, which are the light purple buildings here, have something to walk to, have something to do, have places to shop, to eat while they're standing in Mooresville. They really envision this as a gateway corridor. The town has spent a lot of money building this railway. There's going to be more money spent, much the overpass further down into K and B. So from the TOD down all the way to Evans, Evans Aviation, it's down here. This is really a gateway corridor. It's really reflecting and capitalizing on the major transit and transportation investments being made in this area. So they believe there should be a higher standard for buildings in this area than we typically would want it. So Michelle and I envisioned providing some sort of, and the mayor mentioned this at the last work session, perhaps an overlay district of some kind would be appropriate for this area to enhance the design standards on top of a base zoning district. I think right now we're proposing a VAC, a lane use designation, which would probably translate into a VAC-style zoning district. Similar name, doesn't have to be that, you could create a new one from scratch. But for now, I think Michelle and I are looking at potentially going that direction, but that can be further discussed. So just in general, I know we talked about this already, but I think we're looking for feedback on, are you okay with the horizontal mix of uses approach in general? Specifically since multifamily is a hot topic, you know, are there certain considerations you all want the plan to make about multifamily in this area, if it is allowed? If you want to hear, are there certain design considerations, visual considerations? Anything that you can, that comes to mind would be helpful, I think would provide good direction for us. You know, we, Michelle and I are working on a potential way to maybe space out multifamily projects. Right now, we try to space them out in the concept, just to show how that could look if you did. You have some overlay district requirements, have it actually, you know, potentially maybe have a linear foot distance between two multifamily projects. So, but there's other ways you can do it. That's just one of the best, easiest to enforce, so.
And yellow, multifamily?
I'm sorry, yeah, good question, yeah. It would be helpful if they added a leg, that's another comment I think. But yeah, multifamily is the yellow. Red is kind of restaurant, retail, kind of commercial service uses, grocery store. You'll see the weight competition center in white as an existing building. And then, yeah, build limited use even. The blue is the office uses. We see a tremendous amount of development interest for life science and office uses, even after COVID. In fact, it's probably ticked up since COVID. We're hearing from the property owners and development community that life science uses are a big, a big deal, or are being saw after this corridor and they're really excited to potentially wear some, some large names here. So we want to make sure that we counter that in this plan. So this, specifically called it out in the preferred uses for this, for office and the agency. So staff and House Will Bean obviously full support of life science type uses. We would just suggest that there's certain design considerations being made for those uses. So they have a large amount of lap space, that's more towards the less visible area of the corridor. Their office space is more towards the front. So based McCrimmon Parkway, for instance, we'd expect the office with windows to be up front and the lap space in the back. Now, that's how a lot of them are designed anyway, but we would likely require that.
Also, with those large parking lots, I think that we could preserve more of the tree canopy if we, if we tried to get parking decks in the city. I think that would be desirable. And not more still paved parking, the other time.
So you, you, so that's, so there's something said about a preference for parking deck structure parking. Is that something you all concur with?
Yeah.
Okay.
It depends on the project, good project, you know, you can basically put a blanket, think everything that's.
In an ideal world, you would, they would like to see more structured than service.
And that's what, what we're talking about, the translation, translation later into zoning. When you look at the zoning, you look at what kind of incentives then can we go into that to encourage the structure to work as service, so. I also wanted to build off of, you know, something that Brad said about the multifamily, because we know that that's a concern that all of you, the entire court, want to build out the multifamily, looking for a mix of uses. So we would like to start this discussion as all possible to get a better understanding of, you know, when you're talking about the, in your head, because that's going to help us with this, I would say, when we get to regulations. If it's really the pure number and just wanting a mix, the spatial requirement might be the way. It has to be just insofar apart. If you're wanting to see more grace life, grace park life developments, and for a lot of the rest, we can require vertical mixed use, we can require vertical mixed use just in the street. If it's wanting a mix on an individual block, or if it's the visibility of it, you know, going down the streets, we can say, stand on a ladder and it can only be behind other buildings. So you're going to have some sort of non-residential use with potential residential behind it and they're extremely connected. So there are different things you could consider, that's a handful, but helping to get a better understanding of kind of what each of you are thinking, what that vision is in your head will come with better. Come back with the zoning later to address that.
For full disclosure, you know, we work very closely with the property owners in this area. Their general position is horizontal mixed use, although certainly pursue something that integrates vertically or is like a grace park look, where if the, if there is multifamily near the, within a certain distance or a joint to McCrimmon Parkway or primary thoroughfare, you know, you could require vertical integration, you know, round, so it's rocky and there, I think this, so you got like ground for commercial and residential. So it'd look like kind of a grace park type of, often, but totally optional option.
Did you have your thing?
Yes, I did, thank you so much. Do you want to enter any questions right now?
I was going to, Brad, facilitate this part unless you want me to help with the cards. How would you like to handle this?
Yeah, so I guess we'll run a card up first.
If I could just make one more, one comment quickly, just in reminding you that people are engaging with you through email. You did receive also an email from Matt Stevens. He was one of the major parcel property owners in this area. Staff has also received some information from the group representative, Ed White. He was also another significant property owner, just sort of sharing with us their, their perspective on how mixed use has come together in Mooresville and that, that there are mixes. And Brad has received that information and is, is looking through that to, to come back and share, but just that those property owners are actively engaged in this conversation and could be or are going to be trying to, as well. Thank you.
And Jeff Manvins with the weight competition center, also a partner in this discussion. Yeah, any, any comments or welcome at this point?
I'm going to go to Councilmember Strick, Johnson, then Ralph, then me, and then, I'm not sure about the order of use right now.
Very helpful presentation. I think that this is a very important corridor for the town. This is the first time this land has been available because we've invested in the road. So this is our first opportunity really to dig in. Now, one of the things that I've always thought in the space with weight competition center is that hotels or like a residence end which has a longer stay, athletes do train over time. They don't just come in for a weekend if they really want to train at the weight competition center. We should offer, you know, products where they can stay for longer periods of time so that hotel longer stay mix might be a complimentary use in that space. One of the products that we haven't seen a lot of, what we're starting to, is the live workspaces. If we could consider having multifamily that incorporates maybe a live workspace so that people could have a business within their very near residence. I mean, even within the same building, that probably would be a very complimentary use and densify a little bit of the space there. This is exactly where I wanted to talk about, have we, parcel a minimum of two to three uses versus just picking the one, just picking the apartment product or just picking the commercial. Now, if there's a very small parcel, there might be some exception process, but when you have these larger parcels that fully can support more than two or three different products, we should make sure that there is a balance there. And then finally regarding our parking, we always like to talk about. We need to be very careful about how we do our calculations. I was talking about grace parks with some of my colleagues and there's a lovely story that goes along with it, but we need to be very mindful of where we put people's vehicles and also where we're going to inter, interconnect with the public transit. I'd like to see more bus stops. I'd like to see more opportunities for people to take public transportation and that should be embedded in the design of its overlay if we have design requirements because a bus stop would be great to see throughout this area so that people can move about more freely. And then if we have developers in. And then if we have developers invest in structured parking, can we give credit somewhere them that encourages them to keep? More trees. Because I think that floodlot and you're doing vertical, you should be able to keep more trees. But sometimes that logic turns into a, hey, I can put other building there. And, and I really. Not what we were going for. So we have to be careful on how we. Parking. Just raised one to that. So structured parking is very accessible. I know. It provides that somehow gradually does buy a lot more someone. So, I mean, maybe that's a discussion we can have, not today, but just. How that works and maybe sit, you know, on what we're comfortable with as a example. Thank you.
Councilman Ralph? Great point about the bus stops and transit. I was going to make that point. So I truly think we need to focus on that. I like the race. Environment. That's always been my vision in this area. I think. Live workspace, incubators, you know, we just don't know what these are all going to be after pandemic in post-COVID world. But I think having a place where people can work, life science companies, you know, people can go eat, people can shop. I think it's so important because even as I drive around and walk on Moore's Hill, I could see shopping places that don't have the foot traffic. Starting to really hurt in terms of their viability, particularly restaurants. And so we want to avoid that in the event that there is another downturn in economy that there's frequent flow of patrons coming in from restaurants. You know, and so I think that this would be a perfect for the town. The vertical structure of retail. Multifamily with obviously parking, whether it's a deck or definitely more spaces. Because that's the biggest challenge that some of the ones we included in the old days was not enough parking spots designated. But I think that's changed our idea, like that's changed our video anyway. So adding more parking for people that are already there and the agents that are going to shop in restaurants.
I will, I will say in general in the triangle, City Rowley sort of pioneering this. In all of their transit oriented areas, they completely eliminated parking minimums for developments along transit. They're kind of loose with the term transit border. It can be bus stop, transit, it can be commuter rail, flight rail, whatever. But they completely, now Rowley's a little different, more organized, they're more organized, more supermated. But just to give you an example, that direction that they're building, terms of. But doesn't mean you're not, you can maintain the way you are. But just to give you an idea, they're hoping that by doing that more. Choosing transit as an option. That's just, that's Rowley.
So I look at that chart and I see a lot more yellow than I'm comfortable with. The yellow residential along the roadway, I'd be okay without that much if it was vertical mixed use like Grace. I want this to be an area for our entire town, not just people who live there. I want this to be a destination that people will visit and they could add another main street for us. In order to do that, we need retail facing the road that's very walkable. There's wide sidewalk on either side of this road that's deliberate to. Very walking. I love the two turf fields in the middle for weight competition centers. That's a destination in and of itself though. They already have some restaurants in there. But I want more restaurant clusters around there. This could be a real opportunity for us to have another destination in town. So I think that's important. I, I don't want to see parking when we see that life and carry may have structured parking to support their corporate offices. I hope that we can do a full county, encourage the life sciences and the commercial office spaces to take that step also to preserve more. Allow a little bit more density on the office side in order to serve more green space. I love how there's a secondary road pit line beyond the main road. I think that's an important thing to make sure that we're not putting all the traffic on the road. I do like the idea of bus stops as part of the overlay requirements, making sure that we're doing that proactively. Sure that's going to be expected. More than one use on each parcel. I think that's important. I think the vertical, even though we're hearing from the property owners at this time that they prefer horizontal. I think my vision is for more of a vertical. We have invested a whole lot of taxpayer dollars in this area. So they have the right to build by right now, which is industrial. That's not my vision for this area. I'm hoping that we can come to an accommodation that we're more towards this, but less residential. I understand that we are underserved in the area for residents. I think we're already doing our share to meet the apartment needs. I think maybe a third of what I see here for yellow. Closer to what I think would be good. I'd love to see this as a commercial corridor, more on the lines of West End Parkway than a residential corridor. And preserving more trees is always an important thing for me. When you look at the Google Maps now, this is a beautiful area. We're going to lose a good deal of that because people by right will be developing. Whatever we can do to encourage the preservation of trees and not replanting, but actual preservation, I think is important to me. Now, I'd like to ask the, I think to Councilmember Bender, then Galnella, and then her body.
Yeah, a lot of things have already, a lot of good things have already been shared. I will second them just so you know that people agree with them. I, I love Councilmember Robbatty's idea with the, the parking decks and the. Structured parking. I mean, that's really the way cities are going. And like you're saying with Rowley, you know, getting rid of the minimum parking requirements. We need, you know, not that Marshall is in a place where we need to start doing that. But we need to be starting to head in that direction where we have, you know, asphalt all over the place. So I'm definitely in agreement with the parking decks. And I like the vertical mixed use and, you know, using the Grace Park. Design as a, as a go by. And, and also with increasing retail. You know, I think we'd be missing a big opportunity here if we don't put more retail right along the road we are and less these apartments. Put them further back off McCrimmon, but like, like right across from the weight. Center, all that yellow there, that could be a lot more retail and then put towards the back. Want to do whatever we. Serving the green space. I mean, like TJ said, you know, when I drive through this, I look at a side light view. The beautiful, realize, you know, a lot of those trees are going to come down. But I'd like to do whatever we can to not clear cut, you know, what green space we can. You know, and, you know, just from, you're talking about design considerations. You know, I don't know how much authority or motivation we can do there. But I don't want like these apartments in the layout or the design to look like those apartments that are being built right now on the corner of McCrimmon and Aviation. You know, I don't want to see that all along McCrimmon extension. I don't think anyone here does either. But I guess with that, can, can you say a little bit more about the design? You said you were interested in finding out like what our thoughts were on design considerations. I mean, how much room to maneuver do we have there?
So since this is treated more like a commercial use and not like single family, heavily restricted in what we do, we have some flexibility. So we have exterior elevation requirements now for multifamily development. That was as a result of a lot of discussions with council back in when the UDO was being created. So it's, it's totally up to you all what vision for multi-family looks like. You know, they're, they have to be built a certain way, I think, for a cost reason where they're larger buildings together and some broken up. Especially if they're elevator apartments, like you sound like a lot of you all are interested in the structure parking. But yeah, the design, the exterior design, I think we have a lot of flexibility on the requirements for that. So if there's a preference of multifamily that you all like more than what's being built in town, somewhere else in another community maybe. You know, that could be something we can look into. That would be probably more of the code discussion, but we can maybe mention some generals in the plan to get that team up. So. Spitball those right now. That's, that's totally, that's totally a lot.
Some big suggestions right now. Just something to soften up. What a big block of apartments right up against the road looks like. I don't know if it's including more trees around it and in front of it, or if it's the actual structural design.
So Grace Park. Blocks, but they're smaller blocks.
Yeah, and I like that.
Okay, that's a good, that's something that I think we might be able to.
Yeah, if you can show us some alternatives to react to.
Yeah. I just know that, that apartment complex that's being built and like the one trail side on McCrimmon, those two things are. Monstrosities to me. Is it the length of the wall up against the road? Yeah.
Some things that other communities have done, that they required a step down tariff. So like when they're up towards McCrimmon, for instance, you allow them three stories max. Then when they go back, let's say 23 feet, then they can go up to their four story房子. I know they did that in Charleston. They've got Maples or, I mean, what else? And it, and it works pretty well. You're still able to build a paramount units to your lane. So that's something, just a random consideration. There's other ways you can, you can affect materials that make it look broken up or you require different materials for each building. I could, one thing to consider though, that increases that cost. But yeah, if there's, if you think of anything or not just of any of them, thinks of anything, maybe like the Ramaias.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Galnella and Councilmember Robbatty.
For me, when I look at particular, especially in the McCrimmon extension. There's a lot of money got invested. Infrastructure is in place. It's close to 40. And this is our last shot for the town point of view where we need to capitalize on the best, you know, use and how we can maximize our tax district. Because for me, I'm looking purely, we are only eight square miles, you know, we don't have a whole lot of land. This is the perfect opportunity how we can maximize for every land that is there to get the highest tax returns. So that we can put it back into our system. With that said, like, you know, BAC is fine, but I would like to see a percentage of residential versus non-residential component. That could basically, we can force them, you know, like to get correct like Grace Park. But unless we give that some kind of a percentage, it's almost impossible. Lines for them. And, and I agree, like it has the retail and the commercial have complement of residents. Because I'm looking neighborhood after neighborhood, even take for example Grace Park. I have seen over the last 10 years, how many businesses have gone belly out. You know, they are not able to sustain it. And that is the biggest concern for me is we keep talking about apartments, but at the same time, the businesses, especially in the moment of shops are just going belly out. Forget the COVID for a second, even before that, you know, they are not able to, they're not, they're not able to sustain it. So for me, it is a critical piece of the fabric, how they both can, you know, live together and, and, and do it. Because we always discount the businesses as one of the equal component of a stakeholder in our community and how they're felt of it. Then again, going back to. The industrial, we all agreed and I, I'm an opponent of that too, like we don't want industrial in this area. But at the same time, I'm thinking, looking at some of the emails that we're getting. BAC is a broad brush. They have a lot of uses, but they are picking multifamily as one of the component that is lucrative to them. Can we look at options in the zone of industrial that can blend in the Grace Park kind of formula? Like, I'm not saying like a box, like, you know, a big box that we're talking about. But there is, there's a certain lucrative uses that are not intense, like you're getting 18 dealer coming in or something because industrial is like a huge list. And if we can take some where there's a high demand of that and also including to this kind of some things where it can blend, like flex space. Or, you know, is Radis Flex part of industrial or is it part of?
So there's an office flex. So I guess the, the big turning point when it becomes sort of a noxious use for nearby residents. You have truck traffic, like you said, a lot of these flex buildings are, are built and they look sort of like offices. And maybe for several years, there's a tenant who doesn't use the loading docks for back and forth traffic. And then they turn over and a new tenant comes at full speed ahead with trucks. So it's, it's, what's, what's good about the flexibility is also there's some, there's some cons to it.
Yeah, so, so somehow where we can, you know, narrow that use into the flex area of how instead of like loading and unloading. Loading and unloading is going to happen even in like a restaurant, you know, the trucks have to come in, the supplies have to go and the loading docks are there for any detail or if we put a wall, then yes, they are coming in and doing their stuff too. But in a way that the residential and this part can, you know, live in harmony. And, and also the other thing is the Grace Park, like or apartments where I understand parking decks are very expensive. It's easy to say, but it is, if the builder is ready to build it, fine. But what if the front of a building you have, you know, retail, but at the back he has, you know, where like Grace Park, you can go on and on. You know, the bus stop parking, so that can at least take some of the surface parking away, but have it constructed. Because that, that is one way that we can try to reduce the footprint. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, your thought process of structured parking was to take away, like it was taking your more trees. But at the same time, and force them into like, okay, if it is four floors, the ground floor, you know, the first floor is parking underneath. They do not have to heavily invest on a parking deck, which is $6 to $7 million. That is more than the unit that they are trying to build, you know.
I like that idea.
So do you park?
Yeah.
Do you get on the front, but like in the back when they come in ground? I lived in one of those.
So, so, so I, I grew up that way, you know, like it's a very tight space. But at the same time, it is giving you an opportunity or if there is a room for underground, one floor that goes in. I don't, I don't know for the cost and all that, but at least it's, it is giving you that opportunity to have in that scene. So, you know, like, so that obviously these guys will try to. And I'm looking at a lens of. Most tax can be given because we have sufficient. After this, it's only redevelopment of some industrial things to answer. We do the. There is a demand and. Maybe to the, there is a demand and you, and some of the inter, like low hanging fruits, incorporate that into well-defined unit, that would work with prioritizing the health of the public for the resident area. I'm open for that.
Customer number five.
So that's really, really likes Sadiq's type of safe parking, I think that's a great idea. But, you know, that's not the only reason for parking structure. But what you said about Grace Park is so true, businesses come in and out of there. One of the reasons, in my opinion, is because there is never any place to park. God have the, if you want to go to lunch over there, or get a mat here in the middle of the afternoon, or, you know, even go through Dairy Queen on a Friday night, but there is nowhere to park. And I think that part of that might be that, you know, we don't always count for the townhouse to car situation. So like, a lot of resident parking is always there, and, you know, and COVID hasn't helped the situation, since nobody's leaving their house anymore. But I think that we have to be creative in the ways of encouraging developers to maximize parking. Because I said it on the town center, and I'll say it about these retail areas too, if people can park, they will not go there. But I often, it's really a calculation in my mind, whether I want to, if I'm picking a place to go to lunch, do I want to even float a Grace Park balloon, you know, and take a chance? Like, often walk a mile to learn me lunch. So that's, anyway, that's all to say that we need to maximize parking. The other thing is, I don't think that, I don't think there's enough retail here, and I think there's too much. Like, I think we seem to be in a, everybody that works in buildings, like we have to build houses for all of them. But I would love to see really more retail over there, and and I think that we should put, we should try to encourage some hotels closer to weight competition center. Because what would make that area really walkable is if right across from the grand retail area there, if really have office buildings, if that was, if there was a hotel there, or hotel additionally. And I also wanted to say that honestly seeing this, rather than just the blocked land use plan that we've seen previously, this is really making me feel a lot better about talking about development in that area, because I do see a lot of green spaces I didn't visualize before, and I think that's really important. I mean, you know, it would make me super happy if you could see in a dog park over there somewhere, but.
Not a park.
Nice things, you know, with those big green spaces.
It's definitely a park, that's.
But yeah, there's a lot of tree preservation over there, and, you know, if, when all is said and done, if we would think long time about making some of those areas of desert, making there is tree preserves, so that we would always have that, I would love to explore that also. Yeah, but I think that this, I think, I'm finding this particular rendering very, very helpful, I have to say that.
Brad, appreciate that.
Yeah. That's a rendering, right, so just go balls for the three teams.
Responsible's gonna look exactly like this.
I'm holding them to every single tree. What, it's still my time, why are you?
No, I'm sorry, not, not.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I.
It wasn't. Um, I was gonna say, almost, my thing, huh?
You can have a little cross talk, but never attempt that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, that's fine.
Well, I was gonna say something similar to what Sadiq said before he started talking, but yeah, I want to note that, yeah, that rendering looks great, but unless we change the U D O or make incentives in our categories and zoning, it's not gonna look like that at all.
And that's the next discussion, if you want to fast track something here, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's it.
Mary, come Johnson.
So this conversation's been fabulous, I can dito, 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 dito. I think I agree with everything her, and Brad, you are 100% correct. This is a gateway, this is a really important corridor. It needs to look good, but it needs to also be a very vibrant area. And I think that the mix of uses will help make it vibrant. But to everything I think we've all said, we're concerned about how we get that mix of uses. And I do like the vertical integration. But however, you know, and Vicky said it well, you know, there needs to, you need to figure out, you know, how many uses, there needs to be more than one use. I don't want to see a big wall of an apartment, you know, multi-family unit. There are ways to break up a facade that has to be like that, and you know all those different, you know, whether you step it back, whether you break up with colors, and you can make things even units that don't even look like multi-family units. You would think they were some other kind of use, you would even think, I think we talked about this with the town center, to make it even look like a townhouse, you know, but yet it's multi-family. So however that all plays out, I think is going to be critically important. And I think I heard almost every single one of us talk about Grace Park, so I'm going to echo the comments about Grace Park. I think it is important, in order to support the retail and the commercial that we want to see out here for a vibrant community, you gotta have some rooftops. I get that, and they need to be, you know, walking distance would be fabulous. But I too do not want to see a whole lot of residential out here. So as important as multi-family is to this mix, you know, we need to be conscious of that. And I think the weight competition center is a focal point already out there that I think is a destination place, and hopefully that will spur, like we are, you know, hotels, restaurants, I mean, there's, I think the weight competition center is going to be integral in what happens in a lot of this area. And the last thing I'll talk about, well, now I got two things. And I'm going to say this probably in every conversation we have, I think it's important to make sure we build flexibility into everything we're doing. I don't want to be too prescriptive. I think that, I would rather see creativity and innovation and and allow for really good projects to come in versus being, like I said, too prescriptive and then limiting that creativity. And, you know, things are going to change over time, we already know that with, you know, COVID, things are already changing. So flexibility is going to be really important. And then the last thing I want to talk about, that, well, that I'll just say, the overlay idea. So how much can we put into that description of the overlay? Can we put in there like facade, can we put in there like mix of, that we want two, three uses on a parcel? How much can we put into that?
Yeah, we, so with the U D O, like with this multi-family, is that we have a lot of controls still with that. So the overlay, we can have your, whatever base zoning that you choose, so let's say you have B A C, and then you can have special design requirements, like breaking up a facade into a courtyard or something every 100 meter feet of the building, or having certain types of material, masonry up to this point of a building, or if it's over three stories, you need to step the stories back, you know, 30 feet, whatever the requirements are, absolutely, we can do that. Yeah, we, I think what we'll likely end up doing is, based on your feedback, try to come back with some sort of code language that you all could consider, and then something that maybe you adopt, craft, or plan, you know, have a chamber ready to go, to be implemented on the ground, so that we get ahead of the development. Development's coming very soon, and there's a lot of interest in this, folks are waiting for a direction. This is fantastic feedback we've gotten from you today, so this will be a lot of good base for Cheryl and I to start, kind of crafting something that, a lot of that, so. To answer your question, we can require some of this stuff.
Okay.
But we, to your point, the more we require, the less flexible we're trying to be, so we're trying to balance those two.
Absolutely, and I know that's a fine line, I know that is, so, but that's kind of important too, to make sure we're not stifling creativity that's out there. That's it, we're like all in agreement here, I'm like, this is fabulous.
Yeah.
That's what everyone, that's what everyone is all in.
Brad, before you do that, I think we have, is the teacher you still have?
No.
I'll leave. Okay, I just had one caveat about asking for a mix of uses on every parcel, for example. Mine can start that is to prevent just residential, just multi-family swarming. So I'd like to caveat it, if someone wants to build a number of commercial buildings, I don't need retail or residential with that. If there's retail, I don't need there to be residential with that. If there's residential, I need it to have some workplace space, I need it to have vertical integration. I don't want, that's my goal, when I say I want to make sure that there's a percentage mix of uses. I want to make sure that this isn't overrun by residential. So it doesn't necessarily go the other way too. I'd love to hear reactions from the rest of the council about that. Customer number five, who's next, and then anyone who wants to react to my statement.
So I thought what Liz said about integrated innovation and not strictly creativity was on the money. So I don't think we want to be too prescriptive, but I do think there should be someone to make it known that like, yeah, if you have retail, if you could do like some outdoor seating, you know, like that kind of stuff. But I think that, I don't think there's anything wrong with letting people know that we want everything to be pre, that we want the road to be, you know, the road here to be protected, that their restaurant dish, you know, consider some outdoor seating or some rooftop seating for the rooftop garden, that'd be awesome. Or, so, yeah, but also to what changes? I think that that's also a really good point, I agree with that completely. But the other thing is, I don't think we should lose sight of that, that there's we will have schools for all these people that are going to move in. And I think it would be smart to start some dialogue now with the moving home companies, to let them know that this, you know, this is what we're intended to do, and this is going to be, I don't know how many people this is, it looks like a ton of people, but probably it's not, but it looks like a lot of people. But, you know, to let them know that this is coming in the next five weeks. And so that, that may encourage them to be more proactive in acquiring land for more school schools. I mean, quite honestly, with all these people, plus the people we already have, I mean, it'd probably be great to put a elementary school, middle school, high school comprehensive in there. But anyway, that's something, that's obviously outside of our control, but it's something that I really feel strongly that we should do. We should give the school system a heads up, that we're planning over the next however long this is going to take, that we're planning people, an influx of people, and that, you know, I just, you know, that's a conversation that I hope will happen.
Yeah, I know Michelle's been dealing with trying to communicate with, we kind of call it school officials, and get them in-house to really sit through this plan, they have looked through this plan, and we've had some communication with Betty Parker, who does the school size lunch, and she has shared some initial thoughts, but we're trying to get more feedback from other school officials, and Cheryl, anything you want to add?
Airport, although I, a lot of times it's a big principle, but they're mindful of airport as an area, what F A A may or may not represent. Brad is also right now working with some of the data, and some of that, and explaining, and, you know, additional growth that they're, you know, planning in the future, or that might be coming out of, yeah. So I think you actually just very recently on kind of what is becoming.
Yeah, so they, we have any more check in, they mentioned this to us, I don't know, February, Marshall, Hall, Education, I think, meeting, but every year they check in with municipalities over what kind of new development is in the pipeline, and so they account for that residential development. They have a G I S model that shows sort of like heat map, where new development's going, areas that are receiving more development, more eventual, they try to find their schools, their locations. Yeah, that was Marcella, with Lincoln School, she's a long-range player, somebody you won't met, especially use permit discussions, so, yeah, we're supposed to.
Charles, Johnson, and Carol, I've been there, I've been.
Okay, great. Now, maybe I've heard this in the, we were talking about like T O D, but weren't you mentioning the type of residential that we could be considering in this space, would be senior housing?
You could consider, because that's a multi-family type.
Right, right. So we might not always be introducing school-aged children in each and every class, I'm surprised. Okay, great.
Toddlers, as well, you're.
Well, kind of, how senior, senior, oh, okay. Like either 50 seconds older, or could even be, you know, more like present, you know, 20, something like that. Something. But yeah, I mean, we still need more options for retirees and people over 50. And I think Harry's also doing the same, kind of, looking for more opportunities for that kind of help. So I think we should not lose sight of that. When I meant, I did not want to be so prescriptive. If we truly want to have some flexibility and some novel thinking, if we say, well, if you have a residential, then you can only have X, Y, Z. If you have a commercial, then you can have Z, Y, X. If you have a office, you can have it, that's getting really dumb. I was thinking more like, you can have 55% of one use, 10% of another, and 35% of another. There's a very big list of uses in the E A C, and for us to do like almost coding it, it seems for property owners would have quite a challenge, and we don't even know what the costs are, since we could be imposing higher costs without really intending to do so. So I'm looking at multiple uses, and if we want to do some sort of percentage, that would be a better way to go in order to ensure that there's mixed uses. I know that there's concern potential, which is why I offer, you know, work, the live work spaces, where that's not completely intense all residential, it does allow for some differences as well. There's just ways we can conquer product that don't intense kind of use, don't have as many school-aged children just by their design, there's options. And I don't want to totally force the issue, but yet at the same time, we have to encourage, because without breaking the fair housing act right now, so. The other thing is, you know, just, let's think flexibly about it. With COVID, everybody's rethinking how they live and work. There's a lot of people living and working and playing in the field. So the transit is so important in the sector, so I just want to reiterate that is, we need to think about moving.
Glad we're in a little tender.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to, as most garden judges, looking at the script, I mean, I love you, and I respect you, discipline the mayor, I think that this is a time for us moving to our vision of what we want the world to be, and kind of reducing density, looking at all presumably open space and tree, but I think the vision, as I think more and more about it, I think we opportunity to bring a big, kind of vibrancy to a town with a small town location. to bring a big city kind of vibrancy to a town with a small-town location. So the idea of having art and music and recreation and parks pick up on, you know, Portem's point, creating the engineering entrepreneurship. The Paramella brought up a good point a few weeks ago. He grew up in Long Island, and 40% of our population is from all over the world. And what he grew up in a city of 20 million, where there was transit and, you know, flats and apartments, and this is the mentality of our town, and, you know, we were like, we're not, we're not, we're not going to get to number one, when we get so prescriptive and we say, you know, do this, do this, do this. I think this is a time for us to be bold, to be firm in our commitment of what we want to build, and, and so I think that that's, that's what we as a council have to do. I mean, of course, we don't want to have all multifamily and not retail, but we need to sell that vision to the development community and say, this is what I want in Mooresville, and then come back to me with good viable options that, you know, we could, we could have, right, Brandon? And so, and then we can build new process. It's almost like, you know, assuming that we have the infrastructure, you know, so we have the benefits of a small-town feel with all the community, but having the amenities of a big-city lifestyle where I can go to the museum, I can go to parks, I can go to recreation, right here in my town. I mean, you know, Park Avenue in Mooresville, right? Without, you know, the traffic and stuff like that. So I think this is such a great opportunity to sell our brand. I think we're really selling ourselves short if we just say, well, do this, do this, do this, don't do that. I mean, you're, you're the planners, I wanted to put a view to give me the best product that I can sell, and then I'll, we'll go, you know, it'll sell itself. And I think decades from now, people will look back and go, God, I'm so glad that council will just be bold with it. So that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and land use, and we encourage, I mean, the land use plan is your vision, it's the opportunity for you to be idealistic and bold in vision. When we get to the, the less exciting code discussions, those will be a little more, I guess, down-to-earth, and then we'll, we'll get a lot of feedback from the development community on what they think is feasible or not. And so, but for the land use plan, absolutely start with your highest aspiration, your vision. It sounds like you all like a lot of mixed use. So your chunks of green space, not just leftover green space, you want something kind of more unified. Yeah, all, all those things are perfectly acceptable, so we fully encourage that.
Can I ask you exactly, I'm going to go for a little cross-talk here. Talking about being bold, what I took from that is that you'd like to see museums and parks, like was mentioned hotels. Is that a tangible thing you're wanting to encourage, or? You talked about being bold, but what exactly do you mean?
Well, I mean, you know, you were saying let's restrict, you know, residential by third, and I think that there's this notion that restricting residential is good for Mooresville, and I think that, I think you're wrong. I, I think that we need to have more places to live, because then more people work, and having as many, I think there's a meaning in the mind somewhere, where, you know, we might want to reduce the percentages. But I think we have to be very careful when we don't go to a land use plan and say, we only want to have a fairytale, we only want to have this here. I mean, that's, that's all I'm trying to say.
You need more bodies to activate.
We need more bodies to activate, but it might be that we, if we don't want to have, you know, a thousand units, it could be a percentage that we could create out of, you know, this is what we want to have, right? So, yeah, that was just an idea of just something different and unique that we could have a vision together that would draw people in, you know, to like say, well, I want to come and shop, and then go to, you know, I don't even know, just do an art center, because I think that's something so lacking in Mooresville, because we don't have any place where we can go watch a show or drinky like that. That would carry it. So something like that, that's all.
Great, exactly.
Councilmember, Gavin Hall, we have a little bit of a. One thing that came to my mind is we are good at collecting money from this apartment folks for our, our plan payment and, and, but especially for this corridor, I was looking if we can have some incentives that they leverage, like suppose, I, I'm assuming, what, $1,600 for a apartment, or $3,200 or something?
Or, I think that's $21,000.
$21,000. So, so wait, no. And, yeah, it doesn't have a very good access to any of our town resources, you know, coming to Chosia, coming to Mooresville Park, to Acquah, like the MFC and other things. What if we give them some incentives that they can build some facilities inside as, you know, so that the kids can play and there's some leverage that they can use instead of all the time, you know, we taking the money and we are like years and years away from developing it. So, so that it is contained into that block, so that.
You're referring to private facilities, like private or?
Yeah, so like apartment complex, you know, if they say, that they may do, I'll say, a dock park, and they don't have money for doing the swimming pool or some other amenities, but they'll say, oh, we are already paying $2,100, so let the town, you know, use it, you know, use the town's resources for it, which is okay, but we don't have a plan right now anywhere in that corridor to put anything, and so for any person to come, they're come to MFC or to leverage any of our park system, it's not fair to them, you know? Like, that was one of the reasons for North West Park was they gave all that and then it was taken. And, and the way we have, you know, you, you collect the money, but doesn't mean it is, it'll be used for the town-wide purpose, not anything specific to it. So if anything that we can help, you know, a 250-unit apartment complex, I would like, you know, something to be there, and how can we have that, but a good balance where those MNEPs are incorporated into the area? And give them some flex then that parkland payment into that we can, just a thought process.
I guess maybe to remind us, are we required to accept apartment payment in lieu if they choose to do that, or can we require them to actually put a park as part of their development?
So right now, a lot of these facilities, they do do some private recreation facilities, you do a lot of them through dock parks, you do a lot of them through tools that are specific to that development.
For their users.
For their own users. You can do parkland PIL, what's called a land dedication. Historically, we've said, let's make a land dedication that's shown in the area on our, you know, master parks and recreation plan, we look at that. And then there are all sorts of criteria in terms of what that land needs to look like in terms of visibility to the roads by construction. So those standards, if you are going to dedicate, honestly, they're kind of hard to meet. So, you know, we have blackouts, we did the.
Yeah, hard to meet.
We do the, the open state tree preservation, we'll get to updating that section of the code, we've got, we've looked at that all holistically. I'm kind of hearing we can do that, please, how can we work on that, maybe as part of a best practice?
I think, I guess that's a good point, then. How about we use this corridor money to have a park or something local to that area too, so that, you know, they can walk by to a park, which is built by us, money taken from them, and so there's availability is there a factor? That's what my thing is, like, we're taking, but we're not generating availability to any of the parks close by right now. We don't have anything lined up there, because obviously we can't put anything with a park, we haven't bought a piece of property to ensure that we can do it. And this area will generate a lot of PIL in this area. So we want to be, be creative in using that kind of a feature and be a, not pocket park, but, you know, we'll get a decent park with the PIL that comes on.
Yeah, and council, and they've mentioned this to you all before, they strongly recommend that if we're going to have new people into this area, they need to amenitize it, so like, we show a park randomly by the trailhead of this new, or a certified creek trail, because we've done it before in other trailhead parks. This one will, but something like that, public park is something they would probably recommend, of course, use, the council has to have, and select that specific area.
Yeah, and, and the beauty of this area is when people have not seen that, it is, one area is pretty much facing the lake, you know, the Craftery Lake. It is all wet areas, and that would be a perfect place, you know, for anyone to go down and, you know, have a lake on the other side, and have an MNE. You don't have it in Mooresville, that kind of MNE is mostly crafty, you know, other points of just.
Yeah, and I will say, since this is developing so fast, you know, the time is of the essence, probably, for securing a park space around the corridors, just something to keep in mind.
We actively talk to property owners in this area, rather than regular communication with them. And it's not just them, it's developers, we get some calls all the time about people moving in property in the area, and as soon as that goes open, you can imagine, we've not a competitor.
Can you expand that, so that, like, you know, just.
Do you have?
Do you mind? Yes, especially, you know what I'm talking about right this one?
Yes.
Yeah, this area is all wet, basically.
Yes, well, yeah, so that's.
That's not like red, Fred.
They're, they're, so all this is wet when you're, the park would be a certified creek. So they, we're thinking that would be a nice way to complement that creek-side trail with a trailhead park, but it doesn't happen.
Yep, Councilmember Fender, then you.
Well, I had a question, but I wanted to piggyback on what Satish was saying. I, I really like, you know, I'm talking about the payment in lieu, park payment in lieu, and I'm glad we agree on this, because this is what I was talking about before, is that we need to figure out ways to incentivize the developers to keep the green space, for, you know, to create their own green space. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. My question goes back to when you were talking about schools. I think I sort of missed what you were saying. You were talking to them about getting data. Is that the data that tells us, that helps us forecast how many students per apartment?
Yes, it. So every year, they want a snapshot of what's the development pipeline. So things are actually happening, not the vision per se, although they are interested in the, the long-range or, or land use plan, they're looking for specific projects moving counts, and then the areas that are showing, they put it into a giant stew of other inputs from other agencies. So the areas that are more, if red meant more residential development and col, and blue is like not as much, they would try to shift our plan for facility near those red, those areas that are growing rapidly and need those things. So they start by asking jurisdiction or just granting development map people to have access to, that's what they use.
But did you get that number as to they use? If, if there's 500 apartments, it's, how many students?
Oh, no, it's, it stops, so basically, they have their own internal methodology. We tried to get more detail on that, asked the industry, like, or consultants for Wake County Public Schools to do the school planning, deal more methodology on that. They said they might consider creating a PowerPoint presentation, they didn't come into it, shift depth of how that model works. I would, I would love to personally, how that works.
Is there, is there some sort of metric that you guys use that gives you a rough estimate?
Oh, yeah, when, we do have a calculator that we use with all new development, and it was a calculator that was done two or three years ago, former Dr. Tanner, who worked, trying to get something more and more specific. So it dates, the same as it's built in, it doesn't date, but we do have a calculator that we use with each development that is like estimating the number of school-aged children to be generated from that development. And you'll see whenever you have resulting applications coming for you, more residential, although, you know, we can't consider it, we always provide that information in that agenda, just for your information from the foot.
So have you run that calculator on this develop, on this design as it stands today?
I don't think we have actual density numbers off of this design. We have, off of this design, I think we have a total unit number.
Does the density, what does the density tell you that the unit, does it tell you, like, what type of, does the density take into account how many bedrooms are in the apartment?
It doesn't. So this calculation, this calculator is different than the old one, and it just gives you a total number, it doesn't break up into, you know, the unit on mine, so you just get a total number, and it's not bedroom-based.
That's the same way Wake County Public Schools does their model, they just do clusters of units, they don't care whether it's multifamily or single-family in the scope. There's a thousand units in this area, ooh, we need a little, so that's kind of how it works.
Is it still on the school? So this isn't really salient to our land use plan discussion, if we could maybe table this a little bit? Because we have less than an hour now. Could I, I'd like to add to that list on there, if we get to, I'm not sure if we will know, if we want to send a signal to Wake County Schools that would encourage schools in this area, at least a high school, and maybe elementary and middle. Current high school is probably fine, elementary and middle is kind of new, so I don't know if we'll have time to discuss that or not.
Is it prohibited?
No. And we can build anything in here if we go with the new, the new noise contours, because everything's under 65. So it's prohibited now, but if we accept a new airport allowance. If we want to send a signal, I think we need to as a group, otherwise Wake County Schools isn't really considering. That's my understanding.
We have reached out to Betty Parker, asked her specifically, you know, in this area, what to do, what information to gather, if this is something we'd be interested in, to consider really referencing back to SAA guidelines right now.
Essentially saying it's probably okay.
I think it's a decision that they would need to make if we did all of that.
So, to you, Karen Fender?
So I, I'm going to agree, we, we're going to have less than an hour to talk about all these other topics that are really important, so I, I would say we need to wrap this up. And I, I get him that we started because Mayor made a comment about if it was commercial, I don't need a mix of uses, and I would say, I would be very careful about that. That's not how I would approach this. I don't want this area to look like Paramount Parkway or Perimeter Park Drive, and that's exactly what you see when you drive down those two roads. You see office building after office building after office building. This part of town looks, has got to look different from that. And so however you figure that out, with also including flexibility and creativity and innovation. So that's why, that's why you are our planners, to help us figure out the vision that we're all talking about. I don't want to see one use after one use after one use. This needs to be a real integrated, vibrant, very different look here in town, so.
React to that? Yes, I wanted to, yes, also, I just, I think that this multifamily is going to come no matter what. I think that's the thing we need to limit. I think that commercial will come, but I, I'm more fearful of it being overrun by one, by multifamily. I don't think commercial will overrun, and I think multifamily will concern some. So I'm.
Well, I've already said I don't want, I'm not looking for lateral thinking.
Yeah, I, I'm agreeing with you. I'm, I'm saying that I'm not saying that it should be all retail or all commercial. So I just want to be clear. Okay, so you, I cut you off when you were trying to summarize earlier, I think we had some good discussion, but if you want to summarize, I don't even know if we need to do a consensus on it, but.
Yeah, I just wrote, yeah, I mean, real quick, it sounds like just about every single one of you is in favor of trying to find a way to. one of you is in favor of trying to find a way to incorporate vertical mixed-use integration, maybe at least along the main corridor area, try to, vertical longevity. Just about every one of you seems to agree that parking decks are preferred over surface parking, and if you'd like to, or if you'd like to explore maybe ways to either incentivize that. I don't know if I have consensus on requiring. Sounds like everyone wants to at least in the plan, say that's where we have a preference. So, so good. Design standards, they want to ensure that whatever multi-family is built has certain design standards that are reflective of the community goals, and how they want them to look. Maybe explore some things that other communities have done. I mentioned the common, but we're looking at that. So that's great. You guys like, it sounded like the interconnected streets, do you like that suggestion, there's some leaning to street grid, suggestions here. And then the importance of amenatizing this area with some type of park space, another amenities, Doc, something that Doc Hart was mentioning, but just ensuring that if we are going to allow residential here, there needs to be entities that come along. And then last, and please let me know if I'm forgetting one of the meetings here. Last, just ensuring that when multi-family is built, it's out, it's not clustered in an area, that you don't want to see a whole corridor, multi-family, that we, we look into a way that we can, or regulate that essentially, so.
What about hotels by the, like?
Yeah, so we usually show one here in the concept, but yeah, absolutely, hotels are for use. We got one right here next to the competition center. Yeah, totally, I think the plan supports that, 100%. Am I forgetting anything?
Yeah.
Talking about industrial, yeah, you want to make sure to see where the line is in terms of industrial, what becomes more likely, not just use, be acceptable next to residential.
Like, the big competition center is industrial, you know, but that plays in very well with the housing and other stuff. So what are some of the uses that we can use safe, you know, without any, public safety there? And where there's a demand. More aside, kind of, like a flex space, then how can that put some restrictions, you know, and a lot of, I don't know how we do it, but I'm just looking at that.
So exploring those office flex uses that are in industrial areas, we don't have a lot of heavy truck traffic and manufacturing and stuff like that. Anything else am I missing? Those are the big points. I know a lot of other, which is about workforce outing, I think was something I'm sure you all are generally interested in, I know to a certain degree, there's differences, but plan supports that as well. This is really the only area that's left that you can build a lot of workforce outing, so. Good, that'd be a good one on that.
Preserving the green space.
Preserving, yeah. Meaningful green space preparation. So instead, you know, a lot of times we have chunks that are leftover from development because they met their percentage requirement, but you know, I think the plan specifically says this in a lot of sections, that we want to have meaningful green space that's usable by people, not just kind of for a wave on here above. Awesome. All right, so this is great feedback. We'll, we'll get to work on our end and we'll send you some of that, so maybe for that section.
You need to, could you add, like, would it be possible, even though it's still early, like, just taking one arts, art center, theater, something like that?
Yeah, facility dedicated or just, is it like encouraging, like, we'd like to see hotels, we'd like to see museums and arts?
Yeah, you're like, like a, like a Keri Arts Center, like a new stadium, a developer, like a, a musical, a performing arts center, more spoken. Yeah, we can give you at least.
No, no consensus.
I'd get a time center.
So, great, so that's.
Cricket field.
So we, we actually did, yeah, I think we had a lot of consensus, which is great.
What's the question? I mean, you brought up there the idea of fast acting in the section, the land use plan early next year, and maybe a month or two later it can come back to, but I'm seeing nods, I just want to make sure that.
Language for?
Like an overlay or the design.
Maybe the PIL versus perpetual parkland education or public. That sounds like that would be interesting.
But that's a cross chat too, because PIL would be for all of them.
Yeah, we're going to see that, wherever there's a bill, the hackle be, same type nods there, but especially here, where it can make a difference, because there, this is all green space now, for green field development.
Awesome. So. So now I guess we can go to the draft, land use map. I think that was the next thing you all talked about, the markup map, unless some, just up here.
Just real quick, people's purposes for this project, our vision for the future, how we want it to develop. Can't really get into density so much, because that's really dreadful. Actually, maybe during the discussion of the map, share their thoughts about how this aligns with what their vision is. Let us be reactive.
So I will bring up the map.
So we not doing the second break?
Oh, we can do, we can do a quick break.
Are we okay with a five minute?
No, ten.
We need a 10 minute break, and have to really race and share our thoughts quickly. Let's try to come back at 12:10, nine minutes.
Great.
I'll give word. Nine minute break. Come real quick.
Brad, I found this.
Okay, we're coming back into session. I'm going to pass it back to Doug West to facilitate land use map discussion.
Yeah, so this is the last real key policy I want to tackle again. We opened this up, or previous work sessions, where we had a lot of feedback about the future of traffic for land use map. We set some park that up to show potential reduction in certain activities in our areas. This new district that we're envisioning called a medium density residential, single family detached district. So we envision this to be similar density as our current median density residential district or designation in the land use plan, but this would be single family detached only. And this, this does correspond with a lot of the community input receiving where folks are interested in more of that type, product type in the western side of town, especially when it's adjacent to existing single family areas. So that's something that we can continue to discuss if you want. There's also a couple of key areas, and I mentioned these to you at the last work session regarding this map. We want to talk about a specific area near Church Street, south of Parkway, along sort of north of the town center area, and then also the area around the east side of North Carolina Town, and where our vision is for that.
So can we level set? Are we talking about attachment six?
Oh, yeah, it's not an attachment six.
What page?
It's just a single page.
And if you're packing materials, you should have a small one and the larger one is attached to the back. You have an 11 by 17.
Yeah, the, this would be attachment six, and you're bringing that.
And those who are listening, where can I see it?
Yeah, right, that consists.
So you can get this out and let me know, and grab a floor or something. So yeah, go through those areas.
Yeah, so before we dive back into the medium density, single family detached, really need to get some clarity on two key areas. So let's start with this area, which is being envisioned currently in the graph map, is median density residential, of just general median density, not restricting the detached one. This is where the new Airport Boulevard extension would be, so you're likely to see it over past here, and then the road continued through this section. I'm going to try, I'm going to show you this area. So here's Recreting Extension area, here's Airport Boulevard, here's Church Street, Town Hall Drive, it's this big area right here where it says Iron Mountain. So it's a large chunk of land that's underdeveloped. Now technically there's development on it, Iron Mountain takes up a lot of that, but there's, it's a currently a legally not performed use, so it could be redeveloped, and they are not allowed to do any kind of major expansion, so it's, they can zone lower density residential. So there's a lot of potential for redevelopment, so we want to ensure that if there is redevelopment there, we're getting it right in the traffic plan. So just tell me what you all are thinking in terms of the product type here, the density. Right now, again, we have a median density that would allow for single family detached and detached, but we're open to it, obviously, so.
2009 land use plan has it as low density?
I believe it has it as low, and I can see if I can pull that up, but yeah. So this is originally built, envisioned as a more single, lower density, single family area. Keep in mind that T O D is up here, so it would be kind of a transition from town center, which would be down here. So there's already some existing development popping up. Here's, as of September 14th, 2020, here's what the area looks like for this area. Most new development kind of creeping up, so we fully expect this to redevelop at some point soon, so we want some clarification of what you envision this the next 10 to 20 years.
If it is low density?
I'm speculating.
If, that's what it is now.
You can, so right, it's medium density, but we can, kind of suggest to maybe low density?
That's my suggestion.
It's important that density, if someone has a good plan, that medium density, and they love it, rather do that and give them the medium I write.
I'll put medium.
If we do medium, we should do your zone, your new zone or category, medium density, detached. Yeah, detached.
Are you okay with that theory?
Not really.
Just stay low. The medium density is generally.
I just tried, but we're not talking about zoning or something, but the land use map. So we can even zone what it is, and if one wanted to do medium, they'd need to do something with that location. And this is an area close to the government, but close to the, close to town center, so supporting those critical areas.
So I, I really think that, thank you, Michelle, because I really think that's important to remember. They're going to have to come in for a rezon, regardless of what the land use designation is. And it's at that time that I think we can, well, we can, you know, we can determine whether we like the project or not. So can we talk about this for, can we do it like a scenario for a minute? Let's say we make this area medium density.
In the plan.
In the plan, and we've adopted the plan now, let's fast forward to like January, February. We made this area medium density, it's, the underlying zoning is something else today, which I can't remember what it is.
So low density residential.
Okay, so they have to come in now, and they have to say, we want to do a medium density product, and here's what we'd like, could you please rezon it for us?
Correct.
To say yes. At that time, we can say, you know what, we don't like this project, no. And then they either have to refine their project, and we've done this over and over again recently, which tells me that our land use plan is totally outdated, but we can, we can negotiate with them, or that project falls apart and somebody else comes in a year later and says, now here's my project, and oh, by the way, I'm going to do medium density, but I'm going to do this, that, and the other thing, and we go, you know what, we like that one, you're good to go. So we do not have to say yes to a rezoning, just because the map says they're allowed to do X.
Correct.
I want to make sure that we're all clear on that. There then.
You should have a good reason for saying no, but you do not have to say no.
Legally, you do not have to say no. And a lot of times with the conditional zoning, there's a lot of back and forth. Hey, it would be nice if this looked this way or whatever, and you can voluntarily make those changes.
Like, I don't like detached.
Yeah.
If this was detached, you'd get support, and then they can go and amend their project. Okay, so that's important to me, because you're now, you're now, when you gave us this map the last time, which I've really given great thought to, you've created this medium density detached zone, which we're now putting, we're actually going down to parcel level and putting that on parcels, and I have a fundamental problem with that. That's not what a land use map is about. You, you look at areas, you don't, you don't go down to the parcel level and say, well, you parcel A over here have to be detached, but the parcel next door, you're, you're okay, you can, you can have attached, detached, whatever you want. I, I'm, I'm really struggling with that. We're getting it, I know this is not spot zoning, because we're not talking about zoning right now, but we're, we're, we're treading into that kind of concept and territory, and that makes me very uncomfortable. What I would rather do, speak, when the developer comes in, incentivize him to build something Doing it the way we're doing it here on this, this latest revision, it just makes me very uncomfortable.
Yes, I'm.
Not that I don't want a detached product. I think, I think our U D O has some fabulous examples of detached products that will fit into a medium density, even in a high density, quite frankly. And I think there are, there are fabulous ways to get there. Maybe we need to do, do something, incentivize some more to get there. I mean, we have the ability already, it's just not happening, I guess, that's what I'm worried about.
So this, this was a staff markup too, by the way. House Levine is urging that we don't create a medium density residential, single family detached, because most communities don't get back granular with their median density, they do what you suggest. They handle that in the zoning. So if the zoning is, you know, is completely separate process, that's where the, the actual pitch would come from the developer, hey, I want to go to high density residential. I know we're low density now, but I'm, but I'm going to restrict it to all these single family homes, and I'm going to make it look really cool, and it's going to have a park in the middle, whatever stuff they want to suggest. That's how they suggest it be handled, that's how most communities around here handle it. So that's, that is their input now, we're neutral, whatever you all prefer, but yeah, that is a good point to bring up.
But the majority of you felt that way. And we just put an extra bullet point, you know, in the density section, high density residential section, wherever you wanted, that said, you know, would prefer detached. So that way, when someone comes in to go to rezoning, we just don't have any points in the plan that said, you know what, there's some language in here that said preference is really for this, you know, type of local yield product. And when they resign, that gives you something, well, yes, this would be residential, but if you look at the language, that we should really encourage the local.
I like that, yeah. Okay.
You can just put a bullet point.
Just fast forwarding what Liz was saying, if we have seen, the developers are included, they will come, they'll say, I just want to rezon, okay, without saying what product they are coming up with, because technically they may not know, we have seen this time or like, you know, on other areas, but they will say, I want it M D R, and then come back and give during your site plan, you know, how things are getting done, right? Because there are two phases of rezoning, is just the land use of how they're doing it, and then we are not going to the details of how the houses are detached or this one, correct me.
So you're, so there's general rezonings, which is, hey, we're going to take this parcel, and we want it to be designated as a general zoning district, and anything that's allowed in this zoning district is on the table for us to build. We all, and then there's conditional rezoning, where they have a specific concept in mind, they usually come up with like a little plan of here are buildings, here's the specific uses we're, we're talking about. We always try to encourage conditional rezonings with applicants, because the, the unknown is scary, and I know you all have felt that way in the past. is scary, and I know you all have felt that way in the past with general rezonings, you know, you open up the table for all sorts of uses. So, and with the conditional zoning process, you get to how to negotiate, you know, back and forth with the developer. So if there's certain considerations that you want to reference in the land use plan, okay, we actually, you know, we're open to medium density, but really prefer single-family detached, that's something you can justify with that plan. So yeah, to answer your question, we have two types. And just not at a staff level, which. We try to push the conditional, even though they're fully within their right in general, we just always give them that counsel may not look favorably on a general rezoning, because you're opening up every possible use of that district politically, in terms of what the community expects, that, that would scare people.
So this is sort of overlapping, the housing stock discussion a little bit, in my opinion, and to the general terms plan. Whatever the land use plan says, they have to come for the reason. So I would say, if it's low density on the land use plan here, that's default, it's detached, because that's all they have. So if you're not comfortable creating this medium density that gives more comfort, that that's detached, and we have two separate ones, I'd say just leave it low density and they upgrade the rezoning anyway, we're okay with the product. Because I think we're missing the product that keeps people in town after they have a couple of kids. We've heard people talk about people have to move to Cary, but we don't have that middle product. And I think that's, that product, I think, is low density residential, not medium density residential.
No.
You don't, okay, so that's, that's part of the other discussion. I, I reiterate that low density is detached by default, and that's why I prefer that, they have to come for rezoning if you really like the product. We will be essentially upzoning either way. So I'd like to give our vision as, the plan is good, we don't need to encourage more development, development will become near ten in the nation as a place to live. All our land is going to be developed, I'm in no rush to do it more densely than we need to. Councilor.
So, you know, I think Morrisville is in a very unique position, just because of the characteristics of our town, and, and how we've been developed over time. I know you guys have caught me singing all this and reading these, but we know right now that sixty-two percent of the dental units in our town are apartments, townhomes. So we, and that's compared to twelve percent in Holly Springs, only thirty-seven percent in Cary are townhomes and apartments. So we're already have a extremely large percentage of townhomes and apartments in our town. So I think because of that, we, regardless of what House Levine says, we, we're in a unique situation, and we need that new category or zone for medium detached residents. You know, if, we know, if we've read through the comments, this is a big deal to our town's residents. And, and to this particular parcel, I mean, we keep saying the land use plan is our vision, for how we see the town moving in the future. Our vision shouldn't be to stack as many townhomes and apartments we can on every single square inch of Morrisville. My, my vision, and I feel like I represent a lot, a lot of the residents based on our public comments, my vision is not to have a bunch of townhomes all up and down Church Street. I know from just those two developments that are there, people are extremely upset about just those two developments and townhomes. There's no project in the works to upgrade Church Street. You know, I, I just don't think Church Street in our area can sustain a, a bunch more townhomes. So I am highly in favor of keeping that, that undeveloped land, meet either low density or medium density detached. And I think that's extremely important.
Councilor, Ms. Johnson, please.
I have a question. I just wanted to verify the Aviation Boulevard segment that is to be built, that is not built today, is that designed the four lanes or two lanes?
Airport Boulevard.
Airport Boulevard, where it does not exist today, through Morrisville, next to Twin Lakes. Will it be four lanes or two lanes?
Four.
It should be four.
I believe it's four.
Okay.
Looking over to Michelle's issue.
Oh, I was.
From my understanding, it is four, because the other segment is also.
And that's what I remember as well, but I think it's really important that we verify that, because you don't want a low density product running through four lanes, it just, to me, it doesn't make sense. I think a medium density product is a better. I still want to understand the differences between the detached and the attached, is there anything else other than attached versus detached? Is it identical to the medium density residential, or is there setbacks that are different? I don't know. But I'm okay with medium, I just don't think wealth is in that.
I'm fine with medium density. I mean, I think, you know, if they don't, I mean, I don't think the market anymore for single family, quite frankly, and we've seen that. And I think that medium density enables us to at least have, you know, encourage, and give their residential developer to come and say, commit into each application. We don't have to accept anything that comes before us, this is the land use plan. Here's what we're seeing out there in the market. And for me, like, I, I, I agree that like Church Street, Councilor, under the point that we don't want to have a lot of density in there, in those areas, in certain areas in Morrisville. We had a great discussion this morning about areas where more of these, you know, multi-family U V, whether it's airport or layer of criminal. So I think as we build out the land use plan, that's really my vision for Morrisville. I think, I think we have to, and this is my personal opinion, as we look at the future, I think we have to get out of this kind of single-family mindset, because I think, you know, we, we got to bring people in to live in Morrisville, to live and work in Morrisville. That's what's going to bring the greatest amount of economic return for us down the road, ten, twenty, thirty years out. So that's, that's, you know, the tough, how do we balance that in certain areas? Because I've heard from people all across Morrisville, from every neighborhood in Morrisville, we have thirty thousand people that are here, many people from all around the world, and I think many of them actually have defined that, that's medium density for multi-family U V. It's done smart, it's done well, and the most important thing is the infrastructure, to make those kinds of multi-family investments. So, so anyway, that's just my, my thought, but I, I'm fine with medium density.
And I, Michelle just confirmed that it's four lanes.
And you're actually going to get a quick update on this project on Tuesday.
You know, I love Rowland's. Thank you.
Last one. For Tim Johnson and Councilor.
So, Anthony, you want, you haven't talked, this would be my second time talking. Go ahead, Anthony.
So I was going to say that I, so I think it matters less whether this particular area, where we change, on this particular area, because it looks like from these little parcels of undeveloped land, there must, most of this is developed, isn't it?
Uh, so it's mostly, it's mostly underdeveloped, I guess. So there are little houses there, but there's a lot of undeveloped land along the parcels. We know some of them are trying to sell, so we're trying to get ahead of that.
So I don't think that, I, I want to see, I, I one hundred percent disagree that there's not, that there's not a call for single-family houses. I think the problem is you can't buy a single-family house in Morrisville. I mean, you know, that's the trouble, it's not that there's no market to a, a neighboring town. I don't necessarily think that it's a bad idea for there to be, I don't think that they, the presence of four lane road, of four lane road necessarily prohibits smart, single-family detached housing, but I am okay with not creating a new zone, I mean, a new land use zone specifically for that purpose. If we can get, we can get there zoning, that's fine, but I don't, I don't see that there's, I don't, I think there's a lot of land that you can do, a nice little single family, that somebody could develop a nice little single-family development there. I, I, I really disagree with the idea that a single family cannot attract a product. And if you have any doubts about that, just look around at our neighbors who are building a single family at, truly alarming.
So you, you are in favor of medium for the plan, but, but also when the zoning comes before you, you'd like to move towards the detached product.
I, I think I'm more in favor of leaving it low, because they have to come, they have to come for a rezoning anyway. So I think leaving it low sends the message that we're not looking to put out the top apartments in this, you know, or townhouses in this area. I think that message is not clear, that somebody says, wait, I have a really nice detached product that I'd like you to take a look at, like, would be medium, then, you know, like a Del Webb or something like that, you know, then, okay, I mean, let's take a look, but, but I don't, I don't see the need to change the zone.
Uh, just to summarize before we move to the next comment, so we got everyone with a suggestion, so it looks like I got three, leave it low density residential, one of those, the caveat being okay with medium density, single-family detached, and then we got four, just keep it general mediums. So it looks like the medium, general mediums are kind of the direction we're getting now, but I'm not going to take any more good backup there.
I think I was next.
Okay, well, yeah, and then I'll react to your side. Please do.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure you understood where, because I wasn't clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I am okay with medium. So I think it's really important, seriously, what I heard from everybody was, we would entertain medium density detached in this area. Even those of you that said leave it low density, said I would consider medium density if it was a good product. I'm saying make it medium on the map, and I want to see a product, I want to see a good product that is detached.
Then nobody's going to come to us with a low density product.
So, so here is, here, I, I, I think we're also forgetting, when House Levine, as a part of their work, also did a market study, and the market study shows that low density or very low density is not viable anymore. And, and if you, and, and, and so that's, don't forget, there was a market study. So, so there's our vision, and then there's reality too. So you, you know, and those are very important, those two pieces are very important.
Not viable for all.
If, if our vision, well, reality of the marketplace, if our vision is way off, and the, and the reality of the marketplace doesn't support our vision, it will never happen. So if you're, so if you're going to have something down there that says low density, nobody's going to come in and, and look at it and market it, or going to be able to afford that product. So here's, 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 here's a reality example. If you look at like Providence Place, or if you look at Kids Creek, those are medium density. I think Providence Place is a beautiful, single-family residential development. I think Kids Creek is too, and all these other, I'm, I'm, I don't want to single out, like the parent who singles out their favorite child. They, they, all of these, there are a lot of really fabulous, single-family neighborhoods in Morrisville that are already medium density, and they're detached products. So the reality is, that's, that's what we can have, that's, I, you know, I was, I helped part of the council that approved Providence Place and Kids Creek and Hannah. You know, I'm good with those neighborhoods, clearly. You all are here, and I'm happy you're all here, because without, without those neighborhoods, happy you'd be here in town. So I think that that's what I want to see. So I also think we're, we're all, we all want to get to the same end, but different ways to get there. Some of us are saying, well, let's do it this way, and others are, of us are saying, well, I want to do it this way. I think we all really do want to get to the same end. And when Michelle said, you know, we can put wording in the plan that says detached is favorable, then that's, I think that's what we're all sort of talk, most of us are talking about anyhow, the majority of us, for sure. So that, that's my way to get there. So that, that's all I wanted to say.
I'd like to react first, and then, first I'll react to what you said. I think our same end might not be the same, actually, because as one of the residents put in, they said, if the market is not looking to develop a piece of land on their current zone right now, it's okay for it to be undeveloped. It is not my goal to make sure that every parcel in town is developed. So that's, that's my reality, that it's okay if some land doesn't get developed. So it is not, I think property owners have rights, and the rights they have are the rights they have. And there isn't an implicit right that they get to upzone to meet the market demand. Like I said, I think Morrisville will be in great demand, and right now, the market study might say that people are not interested in building low-density products here, but I think they will catch up. And I think that those will be built eventually, and the land will become more scarce for the entire region. So that's just my opinion, and my vision for the town is that I'm in no rush to develop all the land now. And that's what I hear when I read the comments from the residents, that there is not, they don't feel a rush to meet the market demand, they'd like to preserve the quality of life that we have now. So that's why I feel that generally, other than the pain points like the Crimmins, where it is zoned very much different than our vision, I'd like to leave generally the town zoned as is, and if people have to come for rezoning, we do a conditional rezoning, we take the time to do that, and make sure we do it right. So, and to your reaction that general medium was okay for everybody, I heard Liz was the one who had trouble with the new zoning indicating that it's detached. And then I didn't hear anyone say that they're okay with general medium, but I did hear you say that in a bullet outside of it, I would rather give more clarity that if we're going to a medium, we make it very clear within the zoning that it's medium detached. And so I, I didn't necessarily hear everyone say that they're okay with general medium, I thought they were medium, the new one detached was what they were, but I'm getting, people saying, no, they were buying a general medium in terms of rezoning, so, okay, I'm seeing head nods on that. So I misinterpreted what I heard, so you heard it right.
Okay.
So there's that. Then I'll go to, Councilor Geron, and then Councilor.
Brad, you got to help me out here. I think this whole general thought process has gone different. Tell me how many homes can be built in a low density?
So right now, it's about, in the zoning district, you're more happy it's a.
Four, right. So like quarter acre, pretty, medium density?
Seven point five.
Four point five?
Seven point five.
Seven point five. And so have you seen a medium density attached? I've not seen, so I'm trying to see if there is a medium density attached product in town.
We, we do have.
Thornberry. Thornberry.
But that was.
No, that's Thornberry. They have single-family and townhomes. No, that's Thornberry. They have single-family and townhomes, all at medium-density residential. That is your focus.
But that was trying to accommodate the, the land that they were not able to use, so that, that's how they basically split it out.
It is, that's what, that's the biggest side.
So a weird thing about the, so a lot of them are based on density units per acre. So you might get a clustered, really narrow lot, townhome development, like, we're talking like 24 feet, 23 feet, and that reach townhome, but they, and, but they get classified as medium-density because their overall density is low, and when you look at their entire parcel. So then, like, closer to Church Street here, you know, like Church Street, the townhomes near Jeremiah, like, those are, those are high-density and they're urban-looking, so there isn't a lot of giants, lots of green space around. So their density gets bumped up. I think you're allowed 17 units per acre right now. Which sounds like a lot, but it's the other jurisdictions in the entire, so it's, we're right kind of in line, I think, with a lot of other places. So it's, it's, it's almost like a case-by-case basis?
Yes, case by case, because I live in Breckenridge, my house is medium-density, we live in medium-density. T.J. is low, you know, Liz, Donna is a high-density detached, and versus medium-density too, you know. So I'm having a very hard time, and, you know, like, especially at Church Street, you know, like, that corridor, like, I'm assuming right now, knowing that townhomes are close to $400,000, and then trying to have a low-density product, it's, it's, I can't, I don't see a market that I would pay a million dollars to go stay on Church Street. That's pretty much the reality, you know, I'd rather stay in Creston area, or where it has bigger infrastructure in other areas. So not trying to downplay Church Street in any form or shape, but medium-density, I don't understand why it's considered a bad product. Because we're 80% off, our town is medium-density, housing, like especially a single-family. So that, that's where, I think Donna, going back to yours, like, the stash that you gave, for 62%, right, you said?
We have 62%.
We have 62%, and we are 8.84 square miles, okay? And that's the percentage. I just looked up while we spoke. Holly Spring is 11%, and Holly Spring is 17.19 square miles. Here has 37%, and here is 59 square miles. So look at how big they are, and then we can just take percentage of a certain town and compare it to us. We are packed. We are only 8.84 square miles. So, and people are coming to Morrisville. They want to live in Morrisville. So it's not like catering to the devil, is we have a problem how to satisfy the housing needs, and how do we do that? Is this more of a philosophical question here? Because not saying apartments or not, this one, we are going too narrow, I agree with what Liz is saying, like, you know, going to a parcel by parcel, it's very hard. You know, people want to stay, they want, they come as live, live place, like you're saying, like, you know, they want, it's if life signs, they want to come, they're, you know, either in desters or fresh, that they want to stay in an apartment, they want to figure out what it is, and then they want to try buy a house or a townhome. And by then, I'm, I'm assuming in five years, a townhome in Morrisville will be half a million. So, and that brings to a different point for me, is we went to the affordable housing study. And in affordable housing study, they said, there was a beautiful chart, I think, I can, next time I can, I'll email it to you guys, the affordability of how much the Morrisville residents can really buy. It was three categories, 14 to 1800 is what, with the current salary structure, that those are, they can afford to buy for, that was more for rental. And then they said there's no market after 18 to 2200, because it goes in a single digit amount of people who cannot. If you take that to a townhome, or a single-family home that is $600,000, that gets crushed, and we are talking about low-density, that's almost a million dollars. We don't have that kind of stock of people who can afford to live there. We had also looked at the situation, what people want, but they don't have that much of staff to support a low-density of a million-dollar home in Morrisville. But that, that's, like, and we don't have to cater to everyone, but my thing is trying to give a comparison of how I look at things, because it is more important for people, and make it affordable. Looking at all this discussion, I can't even see Morrisville's affordable at all. And, but what are the options? And how do we work with it? And do we say basically, I don't want townhomes, or I don't want apartments, and only single-family? We're taking an entire stock of two people who want to stay in Morrisville in that area out. Martha lives in a townhome. What's wrong with that? And she loves it, you know? And if I get old, I want to live in a townhome, you know? No, I'm going to say, no, no, I'm going to say, no, I'm going to say the reason that people use townhome, because they, they are fed up with cleaning their lawns and all those things.
It's not just...
Let's go to Councilmember, turn to Councilmember.
I didn't mean to interrupt, you know.
Sorry, I didn't. Okay, um, I, I have nothing against townhomes. Townhomes are a great product, and if I get old too, I'll, I'm almost there. But no, I think that they're a great product. I think, um, the issue is that Morrisville, it's 20, 21% of our housing units are already townhomes. So, you know, I, I realize that people are moving to Morrisville, and they move out. You know, we have, we have apartments, but because we have townhomes, we have a very, don't rush me, TJ.
I'm not trying to rush you, just...
No, okay, we spoke for seven minutes, I sat there and timed you, don't rush me.
I'm not trying to rush you, I'm just trying to make sure we hear from everyone and that the staff gets what they need by one.
All right, just 30 more seconds now, but, um... Now, for our percentage...
You were saying about the percentages, and that carries only 21%.
21%.
21%. People move...
We don't have to, we do not have to provide all the townhomes. We currently now transient community, we do not need to make it worse. And I don't understand your argument about $1 million homes, just because it's low-density does not equate to $1 million, valid argument. Thank you, I had more to say, but...
I got it, but we're not really on the whiteboard, and that's, that part of the discussion.
Well, I would like, I would like the same respect you treat every, the men.
Okay. Don't feel like I did anything differently, but I take that feedback, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate it. Councilmember...
I just wanted to say that, that I am certainly not adverse to a Kids Creek-like development, or Morrisville, I mean, or a Breckenridge-like development in this space. So if that, I honestly thought that, where I live, I thought it was, it was low-density, so that, that's on me. So I'm not adverse to that. I, if we can deal with what actually goes there in zoning, then I think I'm probably fine. I, I don't think that, I mean, I can see that the larger lot size in the low-density might be, you know, might be a turnoff for developers. I just, again, we need to make all of these decisions in the context of, do we have the infrastructure? Do we have the roads? Do we have schools? If we don't have, if we don't have schools, we can't go seven to an acre of anything on this space. Like, we can't, because there's no place for those kids to go to school, and we're going to be busting us out to Nobahills. So I, I just think we need to, we need to make all of these decisions in the context of, can we? Morrisville's not going to be a desirable place to, to come to, no matter what. People want schools, and that's the main thing that they're looking for when they move into a place. People will travel for their jobs, they will not let their kids travel to those schools much more easily. They'll travel for their jobs, they'll spend a hell of a lot of road before they'll let their kid be, be bused 45 minutes because we can't miss. So that is, that's why I'm, I, I think that, I'm finally changing the zoning to medium, but I, I think we should make sure that we have the infrastructure and place to support that lot.
I agree.
Until that, then I don't think we should change the zone. But once we do, you know, I mean, you sell WCPSS, they bought a land or everything, and don't need it.
Correct. Councilmember L.
Well, I think, I'll be completely agree, but I want to thank everyone for making really great points. And, you know, I, I really, really, Councilmember Geronella, I think, made some really great points. I was going to debate about affordability, but I think it's a healthy balance of being in the, of Hazel's stock that is affordable, that also enables us to, as we build out as a town, even attracting perhaps younger demographic to make Morrisville, it keeps coming back to the vision of making Morrisville a great, young, vibrant place, a great international city, people are coming from all around the world, and I think you're used to living in a real medium-density product. I think, you know, so at the end of the day, I think we need to be open to having a land use plan that has been well thought out by Hazel Levine, there's been people from all across Morrisville, to be open to that. We don't have to accept that, like Liz Johnson said, if it doesn't meet our demands, and we don't think that it's a good product, we don't have to accept that. We can have them come back. So that's where I said in the beginning, we're getting land use confused with zoning. We can always come back and make the zoning decision. I think that, Councilmember Fender has made some great points about the concerns of, you know, traffic, infrastructure. She's been a really strong leader in terms of tree preservation and all these kinds of things, which I think have brought to light conditions that we can work in the development process, to make sure that, you know, even if it was down the road, multi-family, I want to see more negotiations with developers about dedication of land for parks, you know, I mean, those kinds of things. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think that's sort of where we are as a town, is we can either keep things the way they are, say we're going to just not develop anymore, or we can say we're open to smart growth, smart development, that is providing affordable housing. So, you know, how can you be for affordable, I'm not saying, everyone here is for affordable housing, but I think we have to let go of the comfort zone of saying, well, let's just keep a low-density residential. If we're going to be strong as a council and have an affordable, affordable housing policy, then I think we have to be open to some type of medium-density product beyond just your traditional single-family. The, the, the catch, and how do you balance that with traffic, schools, all these things? You know, I mean, that's, that's really a challenge, but I think you all know that, and I think that's the key.
Yeah, and if you don't mind me interjecting, just building off that, are you all still in support of a single-family detached only medium-density, or are you now all, so now, okay, so...
I'm in support of it. I think it's necessary.
So what I might do is just go quickly, because that's some really important feedback.
Can you repeat the question?
So there's this, right now in the draft marked-up map, it created this new medium-density, single-family detached-only zoning district. To get more granular with the, you know, and more specific with the medium-density. Although hearing a lot of input now, it sounds like there's maybe not full agreement on that. So we are trying to get direction from the council. Should we leave these medium-density designation areas as just regular medium-density, and you all handle it at the zoning level when these projects come forward? Do you want to specify it here in the town?
So, yeah, I like what Donna is saying, but for now, I would leave it medium-density, because if it is a bad piece of plan that you cannot do it, then there has to be some flexibility by just pushing it, saying, you know, detached, then that's the only reason, but otherwise, I, I, although it's medium-density...
And you want it, you do want it.
Yeah, and if we go, if we eliminate it, then we need to go back to the whole discussion about Holly Tree and the land by Kids Creek.
So I, I, like I said early on, I don't like distinction and going parcel by parcel, that, that really, there's, see so much, so many problems down the road with that. So I don't want to do that. I would rather have it just one medium-density zone. And then, again, I love Michelle's, and I'm repeating myself, but I love Michelle's idea about updating the wording around that zone, saying that there's a high desirability of detached in, in this zone. And to Sadie's point, it may not be possible in some places, you know, and maybe it's not even medium-density. Maybe it, it doesn't stay present, I, I don't know, and I'm not, I'm not thinking about one parcel, so, but yeah, I think one, one overall designation is, is appropriate. Again, I think we can get to the same end, this is how I'm looking at it, we can get to the same end in different ways.
I'd like to keep the distinction. I don't think, I think this is land use plan, I don't think we're doing parcel by parcel at this time. I think it's important to get a clear direction of looking for single-family in some parts of town.
I'm fine with keeping it the way it is. I'm open, I, I, what I'm trying to say is that, I'm fine with keeping it the way it is in the map, and even at the zoning level. I do think, Councilmember Fender, I agree with her points a lot, I wouldn't be using a single-family detached product, but I think it's best that we just, I, I look at it as a general land use plan, and then we can always make those decisions in the zoning. This is a strategic plan. We want every developing leader across the state, anywhere in the country, our plan, it comes up with a great product, and even though it's waiting, it wasn't any, we're going to have to do zoning anyway. So that's my decision at this time.
I would like to keep the general one right now, with the caveat that we would prefer single-family homes in some land parcels. It might make more sense to have a townhome block in medium-density, so that more green space can be preserved. I'm not seeing that, because I, I think they're putting a building in every spot where it's they can, but I would really like to see more green space reserved in, in that way. I would like to keep that, like, the, 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 the...
So, let me ask you this, if we know that there are places where we're, we're not interested in anything except single, uh, medium-density detached, single, then what's, it seems like there's an opportunity for there to be huge, huge amount of wasted time, as developers will come up with plans that are based on single-family not detached, and, you know, we know the whole time that we're, that we're not going to look at that for a certain area, but what's the, I don't really get the upside of not, of not drawing that decision. So, so do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I'm saying we're educating, if there is an upside to that, then I want to understand.
I think a lot of that has to do with flexibility, in case some really innovative or creative comes your way, where there's a, maybe a small townhome component, or Thornberry is sort of like half-townhome, half-single-family detached. If you get something proposed like that, you're not immediately dismissing that. So you're essentially keeping an open mind to, okay, we're not outright saying no townhomes if it's done in a certain way, and complemented by attachings or something. It's basically just increasing that flexibility. Now, if you're dead-set, absolutely has to be detached, and you need to be more about this, and you want to remove some of that flexibility, then yeah, you probably want to, or then that's an option to go with that district, that single-family detached.
So, but...
You'd be able to handle that in the zoning, though, so...
But what are the chances, if you just found this regular medium, and told anybody heads up as to where we're serious, we only want to see detached, what are the chances of we're ever going to see another single-family? What are the chances of we're ever going to see another single-family detached development again? I feel like that's just not going to be what anyone brings us, because that's not the, the big aisle I want.
So, this wouldn't be done, just, for example, let's say you went with medium-density residential in this area here in Church Street, in the land as a designation.
Okay.
And then, the zoning is something different, the zoning right now, I think, currently is low-density residential. So, when this developer person comes before you and proposes something, you can point back to the land plan and say, yeah, we want these considerations taken into account. One consideration, does he prefer the detached product? So, you need to go back and fix this, it's up to our, our standards or whatever the case is. So, it won't affect what's on the ground, you could still, a single-family detached product with just showing this as medium-density general.
So, are you saying that we could create the zone that lets medium-density, single detached, or single detached, whatever it is, like, if we create a zone for that? So, like, it's medium-density on the land use plan and then there's a zone that says single-family, and then there's a UGO that says these are all things that have to be on this, this type of parcel, but that's the...
There's two ways you could do it, so you could create, you could do that, get real specific into the weeds with these individuals on the district, where you could put a lot of our communities, what we've done to pass is handle through conditional zones, where we're not going to approve your zoning unless it's conditioned, this is only going to be a single-family detached. So, you could, you could grant them a medium-density residential development, but they have to voluntarily agree to it being only single-family detached.
Okay, but that's not going to open us up to that development by rights situation where they're going to, because, I mean, that's like, there's a lot of development by rights right now that I don't want to see more. So, I mean, I'm fine keeping it medium as long as you're telling me that somebody, that somebody can't come in and build seven townhomes to an acre on that, that I don't want.
Yeah, you zone this general medium-density residential, like, if you just went in and said, general medium-density, and you actually write, they can do, uh, seven and a half townhomes per acre, townhomes per acre. Now, that's why staff encourage us not to bother with these general ones because of these concerns we're facing here today. We try to say, the more specific you can get with your application, your proposal, the better it needs councilmembers to feel about it, so...
Okay, so, so if it, but if we just keep it general?
In the plan, yeah, it doesn't affect anything on the ground.
Okay, so, okay, then I guess I'm fine, and then, but, so then you tell me, when we're appointing a plan where it is going to, going to involve development by rights plus something that I want there, then I want you to tell me when that is.
The good news is this doesn't, the entire plan doesn't have any mandates, it's all guidelines. Uh, when Michelle gets into the zoning discussions, which I think, we'll, we'll both handle, but it'll probably be more our expertise on the stage, um, that's when we'll get quiet.
And I just want to make sure you guys know the alternative to getting old, like, you're, you're hoping both of you get old.
I don't want, I don't want to get old, I wouldn't...
All this good.
Either get old or die.
Right, so we got general consensus that you, you are comfortable with medium-density as a general category, not the single-family detached for now, and to just reflect that moving forward, and then prefer to handle things with zoning, maybe add some text about how the preference would be for detached products.
No, definitely add the text.
Yeah, so, the goodness goes to Michelle. So, we have one more area, just real quick, I'm not making any leap, we talked about Hindu society area, so, head out these areas. So, we, we get a lot of communication from the, the temple about their expansion plans and what the town's viewpoint is on that. So, right now, this is the area that's institutional use, kind of civic use, the general category, but it's really to account for any, um, of the expansion plans or, or this current facility for the Hindu society of Carolina. Also, keep in mind, there's a, what we have, a low-density residential existing older neighborhood back there, uh, along Green Drive in Caribou area, I'm happy to pull here at all. So, you see, this is kind of the few communities left of Old Morrisville, so there's a lot of residents back there that have been here for a long time. We've directly reached out to them, uh, we spoke with a Cambridge representative, um, who, who suggested that they understand that, um, they are, uh, being like kind of ground zero for redevelopment, but for now, they prefer to be low-density residential, and if they do want to move forward with something, they'll, they'll come to you, I guess, basically, for lack of a better word to say. We tried to reach out again just to reconfirm that, I haven't heard back, but, um, that was the last time we spoke to them, I think it was May, that's when we got that communication. So, um, of course, Hindu society, um, has plans to expand their facilities, their membership is growing, they're a very popular, um, gathering place here in town, uh, they're essentially an attraction for the town, so they want to ensure that they have the space, um, necessary to expand, and so, we've really given them that in the plan, in this area. They would like perhaps maybe some more flexibility or more designation of institutional further back into the, um, existing single-family neighborhood. Council Levine has pushed back on that, saying that they're trying to balance the, the wishes of that neighborhood as well. So, this is sort of a compromised area where they think the, the institutional designation should be, so I guess real quickly, we can go around and say it, or, can you start over here again?
Yeah, I think, I have talked into them, they did reach out, uh, which particular parcels are you talking about? Because that's also very important to say, if I can walk on.
It's hard to distinguish the lights, because it's light gray, um, but I can go between the two maps here.
What is the ask, Brad, or the question?
They just want direction on...
Well, they specifically come and talk to us about that lot. Um, I will tell you from the staff's perspective, we've indicated to them right now that we wouldn't do that. Because you're recognized to the potential...
So, that quite a little, you can point. Okay, they like the current designation, they were just wondering if there's room for expansion.
So, yeah, they, they did ask me about that, and I totally agree, slow density on the other side, and we don't, I'm okay as long as there is no access road for them coming from that Green Drive or one of the other drives. As if they can expand and everything in bucketed inside, because it's on the same side, I'm, I'm okay. If they are running track from, what is that you call it?
Fairview.
Fairview would be required to have. Because they have an access, but like most parking lot and everything is on this side, so...
They want me, Michael, not to have a discussion about a renovation without, uh, asking for it or potential application, but in general land use perspective, I think, Brad, do you see the institutional expanding into that yellow at all?
Yes, basically, I wanted to know, would you all be comfortable if they shifted some of their expansion over into this neighborhood? Michelle indicated staff is reluctant to agree to that, because we've got concerns from the neighborhood saying, we don't want that, so, um, the choice is yours, essentially, so...
Can I, can I ask another quick question? This is right where, those homes that are there would have a debt for humanity homes, too.
So, we got, is this...
I'm in, I'm okay for them to expand as long as the direction, the traffic is not going to Fairview, and if they have to have it, have it as an emergency unit, uh, emergency access road or something, but I totally understand the privacy of Fairview guys.
I'm in favor of keeping it as it is. I'm in, yeah, too, um, I, I, and I want to be on record, I've said this before, I'm not, I'm not in favor of what we're doing to Clemence Quayright, so, I thought that's the discussion we were having, I, I've said that before, um...
Yeah, we could expand, so that's another consideration, I mean, is this, so right now, we're leaving it as residential, because there's residential being built down here, but, um, I know they're, they purchased some, that, they purchased a lot of these properties as well, um, but if you're comfortable leaving them as residential the way they are now, I think that's what our recommendation is. We'll stick with that, but for now, I guess they're, they're really interested in their expansion in this area.
Yeah, continue with the thought you're on, but yeah, no, I'm fine with waiting on that end of property.
I'm fine with it, it seems like this is more of a rezoning request, this seems pretty spot, very small for land use.
That's why I'm not clear about the ask here, I mean, I, I, I concur with Councilmember Caramella, I support the expansion efforts as long, you know, would that be still, when they come back to the council, the rezoning request, if that says?
I mean, there's a chance, I mean, they're going, right, I think they're, specifically in the conversations I've had with them, um, there, there's been interest in continuing expansion, they're, they're trying to set forward their expansion plans, they want direction which will lead to more expansion in this neighborhood, basically, is their general ask. So, not one particular parcel we're trying to isolate, but just generally, if we were to designate more parcels in this area, would that be something you're comfortable with or not comfortable with? It sounds like we got a couple of not comfortables, one comfortable.
I guess I'd say, as long as the buffers keep on going out, too. I don't want them to expand right onto residential unless they're buying it and repurposing it or something, but right now, there's nice buffers, so that's...
So, you keep it, with the keep it as is for now?
Yeah, keep it as is unless there's a plan to make sure that they're not impeding on the quality of life of current residents.
And you're, uh, you're okay with some expansion, like?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'd like to keep it as is and might have to leave at 1:30.
Yeah, this is the last single people, I think, so...
Keep it as is, and, uh, where's the new temple go?
The new temple? Oh, the, the Jewish temple?
Yeah.
That is, right here, that little...
Okay, wait, wait, okay, and I'm keeping the, keeping that as is, I mean, there's a lot of room to expand, a lot of...
There is, yeah, they have big plans. I saw some concepts from them and I was like, wow, okay, I mean, it's, it's great that they're there, it's a wonderful attraction, but obviously, you got to consider the favors.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, I think the big stuff that we wanted to cover, obviously, you know, there's, uh, details in the plan that we can further discuss, maybe we can get that at a later date or in the next round of draft for the year, but, um, this is, these are the big policy decisions that we will need to put on, and we got a lot of great recommendations, and just thank you so much for giving them to us.
If I could just say, we're often dating attachments thirteen with a summary of what we've been asked to be heard from the council as a whole, so, at any point, you think you got this, we're all there, plus...
I, I, I was the one that brought that up, and from my perspective, I think you've got clarity, um, I think this discussion was really good, so, we can, for me, we could take that off of this.
So, as a group, we put some things up on the whiteboard, but didn't really get to address any of them directly, we did touch on a number of them through our discussions, so what, um, what interest does this group have to readdress these? These are in first discussions, we didn't really get into the density discussion, some of us shared our ideas, what our housing, our, our housing stock, we were hoping it to be, um, I think these are things that we thought, maybe we touched on them in these four hours, but we didn't. Is there interest in having another, or a session or something to delve into this a little bit?
So, I, I, I think we hit on a lot of these, I really, the only thing, we haven't talked about the timeline, but, um, I think we hit on a lot, we talked about schools, we talked, we did talk about housing stocks to some degree, I think we hit on a lot of these, TJ.
I, we did hit on a lot of it, I'm just trying to gauge interest. We didn't really touch on whether or not the UGO, if this should be adopted before the UGO, because at least some parts fast-tracked, and that's an important thing, that's about the timeline, if we take just a couple of minutes about timeline, what staff thinks that they've heard, whether or not we're comfortable with that, I think that's an important discussion to have.
We are going to bring back, I think Michelle and I already heard, that we are going to bring back at some point language verb in credit area as an overlay, that targeted specifically, and then the general UGO, the longer-term process of Michelle, but for this particular area, we might do something right after the, so if you guys are fine with that, then we'll still move forward. Yeah, this is fantastic, but...
And we've talked about managing some of that 126, so that, that's a key, that this is just another continuing...
Oh, yeah, I have, I think...
We're still comfortable as a group looking to adopt 126 in January?
When?
January. Yeah, I was thinking...
I'm good too.
No. We still got to revise and go back to PDP first.
So, as was mentioned earlier, thank you everyone, especially staff for your time on Saturday, we really appreciate the opportunity to have these types of discussions, very useful, very productive, um, so thank you all, you did a lot of good work today, um, thank you to staff for prepping this, I entertain the motion to adjourn, Mark, if the staff have anything to...
We have a motion from Councilmember Robi, yeah, I sent it to Councilmember Ral, uh, Tom Ferguson, if they, if they will call it a question. Councilmember Scruggs and Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robi.
Aye.
Councilmember Ral.
Aye.
Councilmember Caramella.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Prosser Johnson.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Most of the other past committee. 119, we are adjourned, thank you all.